I will, uh, call to order the Tuesday, November twenty 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 meeting of the State Select Board. This meeting is conducted by remote participation. It's going to be Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending. Of the open meeting law, uh, last general law chapter thirty A, section eighteen in the governor's March twenty third. Twenty twenty order, um, imposing strict limitations on the number of people who may gather in one place. This meeting is being recorded by Stone Media Access Corporation for future. As typical with our meetings, the first item on the agenda tonight is citizens' requests. If any members of the public would like to speak under citizens' requests, please unmute yourself and I will follow you. All right, seeing no one is unmuted, uh, we will move on to item number three, which is select board comments. And we'll start with Ms. Roberts.
Uh, Madam Chair, no comments at this time. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. McChrisky?
No ma'am, no comments.
And Mr. Kevie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'll just begin by, by, uh, uh, expressing some, uh, uh, gratitude that it sounds like there, there is, uh, some, some medical science with, uh, has, has, uh, provided some potential relief for the coronavirus. We have, uh, a number of vaccines that are, that are, uh, making their way through trials and it's been very promising. Uh, so, uh, who knows where these things will, will end up, but hopefully sometime in the spring, we'll all be able to, uh, be around each other once again and not have to worry about, about, uh, uh, the consequences of pension or the consequences of, of giving somebody you love a hug. So, uh, I, I'm just, I'm relieved about that. Uh, and I just wanted to express that. In the meantime, however, uh, remain vigilant, everybody. I know this is horrible. It's really painful. Especially during the holidays, during, uh, Thanksgiving and, uh, you know, we're beginning with the, through Christmas as well. And, um, as we make our way through those holidays, uh, just please stay with us. Uh, it keeps us all safe, keeps us all healthy. Yeah, but we're almost done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kevie. Um, I appreciate you sharing those sentiments. I, um, I think the CDC has some pretty good guidance, but basically just, uh, try to use some, some logic and reason here, folks, if you can, and, um, your Thanksgiving celebrations to live in your household if possible. Um, it's, it's not worth the risk. Is, uh, I guess the best way of putting it. And hopefully, as Mr. Kevie stated, we'll be able to reconvene and be social and see our loved ones in a larger capacity, hopefully early next year. Um, though I, I do want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving though, and, uh, hope, hope you can enjoy some, some turkey and stuffing, uh, and pies and whatnot, uh, even with the, the restrictions and, and our, our region to be safe and healthy. Um, sort of turning to, I guess we'll probably discuss this, we'll discuss the budget, uh, a little bit later tonight, but, um, I did reach out to the chair of the school committee and they are having their public hearing on their budget on December eighth. So we're trying to figure out some dates that would work to have both of our groups come together. Um, thinking a special meeting is probably going to be required to have that discussion just so that we can focus on it, uh, and have an agenda item focused on that. That way I don't just talk about the budget. So we're thinking of running some dates by the group, um, but it's looking like we might have to do a special meeting on possibly a Wednesday or a Thursday of, uh, the week of December seventh or the week of even the twenty first or twenty second. Um, so I just want folks to maybe keep some nights open for potential special meetings if possible. I know it's kind of asking a lot. We do meet often, but, um, hoping to get some good budget discussions and if we can have some focused meetings, um, then hopefully we'll get through it quicker as opposed to having, um, you know, one marathon meeting. So, uh, if you, folks can kind of preserve some dates, I'll, I'll circulate them once, once we figure out something that might work for both groups. Uh, but please keep that in mind as we move into this a little more arduous budget and meeting season. So. With that, I don't have any additional comments. Um, next item is, uh, town manager comments. Dr. Grim?
Good evening, everybody. Um, just a couple of updates. First, um, Bill Rowe sent you all in an email. Free cash was certified at approximately two point nine million dollars. Uh, that puts us in a relatively, believe it or not, good position with our budget. This is after Finn Combs', um, reduction of what we can use everywhere as, every year as we close that structural gap. But, um, so we are moving along. I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased with the direction it's going. I'll, uh, address that more later when we talk about the budget. It's not easy, but it's, it's, um, not as arduous maybe as, um, what I thought it might be. So that's, uh, that's always positive. Uh, I want to respond, Mr. McChrisky, I asked last week for a, um, a discussion on a policy on the signs. Uh, I do have a draft policy from our Veterans Agent. I will be reviewing that and I'll have that ready to present to you all uh, either at the next meeting or the following one. I just wanted a chance to review it a little bit more. Um, and lastly, I just want to wish everybody in town a happy Thanksgiving. It's been a, uh, challenging year. I just want to, uh, thank the board and, uh, particularly thank my team. I have an amazing team of people that I work with, uh, who I think did a phenomenal job during all that's been going on uh, in an unprecedented time to keep the town positive as best as possible, to be creative and offer opportunities for people to still stay engaged, still engage in community activities. Um, and I particularly always want to say thank you to the people of Stone. I've been, uh, I'm always grateful and very thankful for, um, how successful I am in town and that I came in as a total outsider and every year I kind of want to remind myself as well how thankful I am for, uh, for working in such a wonderful town. So I wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Make the best of it and, um, we're chugging through. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grim. All right. Uh, so we do have a couple of items on the agenda tonight. The town clerk appointment discussion to continue and our FY twenty-two budget discussion to continue. Uh, but we do have, uh, consent agenda. Uh, I think, uh, we have Sergeant O'Connor with us tonight to talk about item B of the consent agenda. So I'd like to take that out of order, um, and go to the consent agenda. Full item B with, uh, the board's own client. Um, besides that, we have item A, which is payroll and bill warrants and any other documents to come before the meeting. Item C is to accept a grant from the Last Call Foundation. We wanted one thousand six hundred fifty dollars for the fire department. Item D is the water connection at six oh two Pleasant Street, Peach Orchards Park LLC. I M E is to approve the open session minutes of, uh, November tenth, twenty twenty with the changes circulated by Ms. Roberts. Items A, C, D, and E. Who is inclined to act on those items of the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve items A, C, D, and E on the consent agenda as printed.
Okay. All right, motion made and seconded. Um, on the motion, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. McChrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Kevie?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, as I mentioned, item B is the approval of Chapman Road signage updates, replacement of signs in new sign locations. Sergeant O'Connor is on the line with us and we had, uh, some information circulated to us, so, um, I can pull up on the screen here a couple of documents. Uh, Sergeant O'Connor, if you just want to give us an update as to what you circulated to the board and then, uh, the additional information provided by the engineering department?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you. Appreciate, uh, being able to be present once again. Um, so I made a couple of minor suggestions with a, uh, subsequent drawing, uh, just to show the movement of the signs, like the sign movement would be no more than twenty feet, uh, towards the main roadway so that they were more visible. With the biggest change, um, adding one new sign, a large sign, like I recommended, like four foot by three foot to be posted, um, on Central Street by the intersection of Dyckman Way for any trucks looking to make the left-hand turn. They would see that sign quite clearly and visibly, uh, posted. Um, I also had the chance to talk to, uh, Mr. Tisdale today in engineering and he reached out to GPI, which is the town's, uh, traffic consultant as well. Um, and he sent me over later a quick sketch, drawing of an idea that I believe would strongly help in terms of, um, deterring trucks to turn down Chapman Road. Um, it's something that we can do on a temporary basis and see if it works during the winter. And if it does work, then we can make a more permanent solution come springtime. Uh, in the meantime, GPI is still looking at it. They may come up with some alternative plans, some alternative signage and some better ideas to help out as well. Uh, and as I was talking to Mr. Tisdale, one of the things they mentioned was like pylons to make it temporary. But I felt that pylons wouldn't necessarily be a good idea because I think it's just something that truck drivers will just run over. So we talked like a combination of maybe Jersey barriers with, um, reflective barrels or cones or both in and around the area so that it can be seen. But if a truck's gonna hit it, hit a Jersey barrier, they're gonna know about it. They're not just gonna run over a cone or a barrel and keep going. They're not gonna be able to just run over a Jersey barrier and we can make that a temporary solution to see if it worked, see if it reduces the number of commercial vehicles traveling down, down that road. Um, and give the residents an idea of what potentially be, could be coming permanently to help address the issue. And I can see it on Ms. Howe's screen. It, it would basically bring that road down to about fourteen feet wide, I think is what it says. Um, at the entry point, which would make it very difficult for the, especially the tractor railing units that get down there.
Thank you, Sergeant O'Connor. Um, so it appears that the sign recommendations are, are still in line with what we discussed last week. Um, in this temporary mitigation measure, uh, is, is an update, uh, from Sergeant O'Connor said that to engineering department and they're working with GPI to, um, offer some other recommendations that we could adopt. I think the board can do a number of things tonight. Um, how, how do folks, do folks have questions for Sergeant O'Connor? How do you feel comfortable with the, the sign recommendations that were discussed?
Madam Chair, I have one actually other comment. I, I would ask that you guys actually just hold off on any sign movement for now. Um, until we kind of get an idea of what GPI is gonna present because I don't want to have to force people to do the same thing two, three, four times over if signs need to be moved or new signs installed, um, based on what a final plan may come out to be.
Do you have any sense of the timeline when that plan might be ready? Is it two weeks out or, you know, two months out?
Um, to be honest with you, based on my experience, I, I would say it's probably closer to two months than two weeks. Um, cause I've just never seen a plan come that quickly, that, in my experience. I know that in the email chain going back and forth with, uh, the people from GPI, that one of the people were supposed to be coming out today um, to take some measurements and get a better idea of the site and, uh, then go from there.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, yes, Mr. McChrisky?
I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, my concern is that if we, you know, if we know we need the signs moved up and everything sort of at least more visible for the drivers right now, um, you know, I'm not sure if we want to wait another two months before at least moving the signs. You know, that can be done tomorrow. Probably works if I can get out there tomorrow and do that. Whereas, you know, if we have to wait and then also implement the temporary delineators and all that, wait for whole contracts to plan out. Delay is addressing the issue that we already make some minor changes in the short term. Mr. McChrisky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and again, Sergeant O'Connor, thanks for your great work on this, um, in responding, you know, the residents down there want some action. Uh, and I can appreciate the fact that you would want to do this the right way the first time, uh, but I agree with the chair that, um, I don't think we're opposed and, and we're, we're under the authority of street commissioners can, you know, kind of give you a a real wide range here to make appropriate, uh, changes to the signs. Uh, what I want to see added, uh, which allows us one more way, uh, of sending our message is if we, right below them, that the smaller portion we added to these signs as, uh, you're giving them plenty of notification at the lights if they were gonna turn and take the shortcut, that they can't use it. But when they get to Chapman, I'd like to see an additional sign below the do not enter and, you know, no, no heavy trucks that says on the bottom in a separate sign, strictly enforced. You know, they have to know that we're gonna do this stuff. And it may, uh, and I come, as you know, I come from the trucking world. And that more or less says to a truck driver, I can tell you from experience, that says, this is like the roulette wheel. They're there, they may not be there. Do you want to take that chance? Right now, there's not a, a bunch of tickets that have been issued. That's why they're, they're going down there so much. And we are dealing more with the traffic than goes to Campinelli Parkway. This isn't people that use that as a cut. Uh, so, yeah, they'd be coming from a different area. But again, there's so much traffic. If you look and, and you've looked at all these, you see these commercial vehicles down there. Uh, the time that I've sat there, the both of them are coming down and people are going through that area. So I think adding the sign is gonna add a new layer, uh, you know, that may persuade them to go a different way and not take a chance if there's a cruiser sitting down at the end of the road. Uh, but I, I agree with the chair. I'd like to see us get some things done now, Jim, and, um, so that the residents feel like, you know, we're listening to them. And I think that's hugely important because they've been dealing with it for a long time. Uh, and it, I think it's right that we step it up. If something other than what you've shown us here tonight and the signs that you want to put up, if there's something out of the ordinary that wants, that you guys want to do, I, I have no problem coming back and, you know, give you another approval. But we need to do something now, even if it is just temporary fixes, if we, uh, if we got, you know, Jersey barriers, painted them fluorescent so they can be seen and, and just create that bump out that I saw in one of your other maps there. Uh, that's something that can be loaded back on a load bed trailer and taken out in no time. DPW can do that standing on their head. Um, and then while you go for the traffic, cause you know, the way that that, um, looking at that image that's there now, uh, that could be changed a little bit as well, that we could even make it tougher for trailers to, uh, that to turn on. So, you know, uh, not looking to step on your authority. You've got a job to do and I can appreciate the fact that you want to do this right the first time. But I think we could take some low-cost mitigation steps, you know, to, to get it done and, um, show the residents that they do something and then when the plan comes in, we come back and hopefully it's in two weeks, you know, and, uh, it, uh, you could tell the engineering department, we need it. They'll, they'll respond to us, right? So, um, yeah, I, I agree with the chair. That's my comments and I, you know, just the addition of assignments as strictly enforced. We want to make it very clear that you didn't listen to the previous two signs. We showed you another sign that said, do not enter trucks strictly enforced. Don't complain that we're giving you the ticket out. So.
Mr. Roberts?
Hi, hi, um, Sergeant O'Connor. I agree with the chair and Mr. McChrisky that I think we should move forward now. But I do have quest, two questions, um, for our citizens that may be interested. Can you tell us how this would impact of a fire truck going down that, that road if you put up the Jersey barriers? And then I'll ask my second question next.
So it, it wouldn't really prevent any truck from getting down there. It would definitely make it, especially for a tractor-trailing unit, which is what we've seen the increase in, make it a lot more difficult because of the design of the barriers and the width of the roadway. It would, one, still be feasible, have to use a little bit more care for the, uh, truck operator, for the fire truck operator. And in worst-case scenarios, they're not prohibited from coming down the wrong way. Um, we actually had a collision there the other, um, on Central Street, we had to close a portion of Central and to do that, we had to go the wrong way down Chapman to gain access. So obviously with emergency lights and sirens, that can become a factor that makes it a little bit easier for them to access it if it, for some reason was prohibitive. But I don't think it should be because it's still wide enough for those trucks to get down there. It's just designed to make them think twice about it. Um, when necessary.
Thank you so much, uh, Sergeant O'Connor. The second question for our viewers, um, at what point or would you recommend putting up cameras? So you could take a snapshot of the license plate and you start fining people for, or truck drivers for speeding and things like that? Is that down the road or is that like?
That's a, that's a good question. Uh, um, I don't know what authority we would need to be able to do something like that, if we would need any special authority to be able to put up a camera to watch that and monitor that and then go back. The difficult problem would be identifying who the actual operators are of the trucks still to issue the fine because the best we could do is maybe send a letter to these companies, but not, we can't find them because they're not the actual operators. So it, it would help, but it would still be a difficult task at best.
Thank you so much. That is so very understandably and, and clear. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McChrisky?
Sorry, through you, Sergeant, um, and it, are you seeing more of on the tractor-trailers, the, the count increase you've seen? Have they been from one specific company that's already in Stone?
Well, I, I haven't seen specifically, but I have been told by multiple residents down there of the increase of the Amazon trucks. Um, it, it during the overnight hours from like eleven PM till maybe three AM, a huge increase of, of those types of trucks.
Right. Uh, Madam Chair, well, this is, this is an issue that, uh, you know, unfortunately is, has brought its, uh, presence in other areas. Uh, the corner of Maple Street and Page Street as well. Um, Amazon now has a trailer storage yard on Maple Street. And there can be as many as two hundred trailers, you know, in that lot. Uh, you know, they may be a little high, but in that area. And they have a vehicle that just full-time goes back and forth. So they're impacting the traffic in that area as well. I think it's time for us to set up a, a meeting, uh, with Amazon. The, uh, we are seeing, or I'm seeing personally, I don't know about anyone else, uh, same issues that some people say, you know, they experience in their areas. It's been on blogs and, uh, and different, um, news media outlets is that they come into town and they just disregard, you know, laws and, you know, they have issues. So I think it's important for us to meet with them and, and to iron these things out in, in that area and maybe even a couple others, if we can get the right people to sit down. Um.
Add that to a future board meeting. I'd just like to stick to the top of the decision.
This is the traffic issue. It's gonna deal with Amazon. So I'd like to, um, have, uh, the sergeant, uh, and I'd be willing to sit in as well or any other, I think it should represent, uh, the board as well. Um, and that we meet with them to discuss these, these traffic issues. You know, they can't use the street and they have to be consulted. And I always say, let's try to work with somebody and, and give them the heads up that this is a problem. Uh, they may not be aware that their drivers are using the street, you know, and, you know, to the sergeant's point, uh, that has been the case with the other company that we dealt with who's been very cooperative is that he goes, well, if I don't have a license plate number, I don't know who I have to talk to. Cause I know these trucks work here, but so that's where we need to engage people is at the end with the end user, which in this case is Amazon and, you know, the companies that are down on, uh, on Schuman Way and, um, on Campinelli. So I, I, that's what I would like to see that a, the police department try to do and if, if it's a military meeting that we could facilitate, uh, I would like to be included as a member of the board, uh, and follow the lead of the police department, just so they know that this goes right up to the street commissioners.
All right, I just want to kind of keep it back on topic here. Uh, does anyone else have any questions for Mr. O'Connor about the sign recommendations? Is any member of the board prepared to make any motions on this item tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McChrisky?
I make a motion that the Stone Police Department, uh, working with the DPW and the engineering department, be authorized to place appropriate signage uh, at the intersection of Old Central Street and Chapman Road. And that the signage would reflect the presentation made to the board tonight. And at any time, uh, the police department, engineering and DPW feel that we can come back to the board, uh, to change those recommendations uh, that they gave, you know, promptly put on the agenda.
I'll second. Hey, motion made to authorize the police departments to work with the public works to place appropriate signage at the locations in as presented tonight. And, um, if it needs updating, we'll do so promptly. Seconded by Ms. Roberts. Is there a discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing and I'll call for a vote. On the motion made and seconded, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. McChrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Kevie?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, and, uh, I think as, as the information comes in from GPI, uh, police department, the engineering department on the, um, the other measures we can implement, we'll, we'll hopefully be able to get that on the agenda as soon as that information's provided to us and we can hopefully adopt some additional measures. Um.
Madam Chair, may I just get some clarification?
Mm-hmm.
This, the vote was for the signs, not the temporary barriers?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sergeant O'Connor. I appreciate your work on this.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. So that concludes our consent agenda items. Um, so we can go back to item five, which is the town clerk appointment. We have some sub-items here to review the job description, review the timeline for posting, uh, interviews and appointment as well as review the process for interviews, which includes potential screening committee, interview channel, candidate profile and interview questions. And we see Dr. Grim is on and, uh, Ms. Bernard, I believe, has also joined us tonight. So in our last meeting, we had requested, um, an update to the, um, the review that Dr. Grim had completed, um, and provided to the board. Uh, so just asked Dr. Grim to please provide sort of a summary of that and the updates that were, uh, distributed to the board. If we're able.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Rowe? Hello?
Uh, no, it's not Mr. Rose. Peter Murphy?
Yes.
Fifty Peters Drive. Um, I was, unfortunately, I was not able to get into the last discussion about the Chapman Road. And I have a comment about that. I would try to get in during the, uh, uh, the first part of the meeting, but again, it was, there was no connection. Can I add to that conversation or is it too late?
Uh, we did conclude our vote and the discussion on that tonight. I let you add your comments, but we won't be able to respond to them. But, uh, if you want to get them on the record, then if, when this comes up again, we can at least, uh,
Right. What I, what I want to bring on the record is the fact that Peters Drive is the next street up from Chapman. And again, we've had issues with, uh, uh, the insulation company that's down in Campinelli cutting through our streets. I did talk to the owner there about being a good neighbor. But the other issue is, uh, again, to kind of reiterate about, uh, Amazon, their trailer trucks are running down Turnpike Street at all hours of the night, which is kind of like the same situation. Their trailer trucks are running down Turnpike Street at all hours of the night, which is kind of like the same situation. The Board of Selectment, I would appreciate, or the Select Board, I'd appreciate it if they look at the all overall picture. Because now they want to increase the sewer line down to that area, they want to keep increased traffic. It's just going to affect Chapman, it's going to check, uh, affect Peters Drive. It's going to affect the intersection at Turnpike and Central. It's, it's kind of like it's, you got to look at the big picture rather than just small parts. And there's also, as was mentioned, Maple Street. That road is not built for fifty-three foot long trailer trucks to come down, so. I just want to be on the record as saying that. That has to be looked at and there is a speed limit on Turnpike Street at thirty miles an hour. And I think if the police went out and started uh pulling these trucks over. You know, going above that speed, they'll get the message that way. So I appreciate you giving me a minute, two minutes to to speak when I had to speak, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, appreciate your feedback. All right. So moving on to our discussion about the town clerk's office, uh, Dr. Grimm, if you please provide an update, um, to summarize what was circulated to the board. You're on mute.
There we go. The board had asked me to take an updated look at um where the clerk's office was at. A current snapshot of what seemed to be working and where we could use some uh enhancement, if you will. And basically, I I put together um a brief, maybe not the two-minute text that um Selectman O'Regan was referencing, but a very brief. Uh memorandum that outlined generally where the operation is meeting the expectations. And I think if if properly staffed, could even um progress and 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 tighten things down in those areas. And I looked generally at election performance, general town meeting assistance, overall institutional knowledge. And licensing, and I want to point out again that licensing was just put into that office last year, um, so they're on a bit of a learning curve. But that has, that is working out well and it seems to be a nice central receptacle licensing, it's sort of going through the Select Board Secretary. And then would get divvied up everywhere, now we have that sort of one stop at the clerk's office, which I think just works philosophically. Um, the areas that we, there there needs to be some work is we've talked a little bit about customer service relations. Minute and agenda gathering and posting, uh, I T and munis usage. Uh, and work on part-time coordination of staff and turnaround time for processing vitals. Uh, I did make a point, we do have um an interim town clerk. Who had held what they call the program coordinator or program administrator position in that department. Because that hasn't been backfilled, if you went with the town clerk and fills that position. Um, likely some of that turnaround time would 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 improve. So I do, you know, in in all fairness, have to point out that we are generally at least one person down. From where we should be, significantly less than where we were years ago, but I think that that's okay. Um, but that one person does does impact the turnaround time. So we did have a s- a a pretty successful series of elections. And we had, we had successful town meetings. Um, but I think again, in the in the areas right now of the customer service and turnaround time on vitals. And the I T usage are the areas that I think we need to prioritize. Uh, as we go forward with staffing, whether it's uh two separate clerk positions that we divide out or a clerk. And an assistant clerk, and I would like to retitle that program assistant to assistant clerk if we don't go with two uh sort of top clerk positions. So generally, that's um, that's where we're at, I just don't think program administrator effectively reflects the work. That let's say Ms. Carrera was doing when she was in that role, it was much more of an assistant clerk role.
I'll get so first, uh, turn it over to my fellow board member for any uh questions or comments on this, I have a couple myself, but. Anyone have any comments for Dr. Grimm on the update provided?
Yes, I have a.
Go ahead, Ms. Roberts.
Yeah, general question, and it's regarding. As the town continues to grow, because we know the town will grow. And that's grow in terms of people and um more robust reporting is going to be needed. Uh, oversight is going to be um more scrutinized, so with this type of growth. Where do you foresee uh the position going? Because it looks like what your comments were was kind of historically most recent past. Not forward thinking uh down the road, so I'll, I had that type of question.
Yeah, I think that that was why I had had proposed in that original review to separate out that position into two positions. The town clerk is obviously governed by charter, uh, the charter clearly references elections and town meeting. And uh on that end, it functions, i- it does function well. Uh, I just think that it is too large of a town. Uh, at this point, not to have either a second position or a very robust assistant clerk position. Um, my thought was we separate it out into two positions. And then what would happen is we we have one full-timer in there currently. That would stay, let's say, with the clerk's position. And then the the position that's right now vacated where the interim town clerk was. Would basically be elevated to a, so a management level clerk's position as well. To do maybe the public interaction, whatever it is, however we would choose to break those out, but a lot of it would be the. Minutes and the oversight and the I T and the web presence and all of those things that I think we really could focus on a little bit. And that person likely would also get a full-time employee and what we would eventually do is eliminate, we have like. Three, four people who rotate in part-time. Right now, I've got people rotating in from other departments that are a little light on work, filling in where they're heavy on work right now because of. Elections and and and, you know, do a couple of town meetings in a matter of three and a half months. So what I, I mean, that's why I proposed that the way I did was to try to account for the growth that may happen and or that we believe will happen. And even the licensing component, you know, if if businesses grow the way we hope they do. You know, that becomes even more more work there. So that was why I proposed splitting it, if if you were not to split it. And keep the the main town clerk position, I just think that what would have to happen is the hiring for that assistant town clerk. Would absolutely have to uh have in the job description, all of those areas. That I think we need to work on because there's just no way a clerk can work on that. And I don't think an an average program administrator job description is effectively going to recruit the right person for that assistant job.
Dr. Sorry to interrupt, um, I just need a little clarification on this, so Dr. Grimm, when you say. The two, to split the position, are those two at an equal level in terms of hierarchy? And do they report to the board equally, is one, the quote-unquote town clerk, as author in the charter? The other is, I I'm just kind of not understanding the distinction between splitting the two and having a clerk and an assistant clerk.
If we, yeah, if we split the two, they would both report to me equally. They would be separate positions, one would report to the board effectively for uh appointing authority. And then day-to-day, as the clerk currently does, you know, reports in on day-to-day to the town manager. But is appointed by the town clerk, is appointed by the board. The other position would would be some type of a records clerk. And it would be something that would would. Quite would be to me, um, and then each would get a staff member. If we went with.
Of the records clerk?
Excuse me?
Who would be the supervisor of the records clerk?
I would be. It would be equal to the town clerk.
The town clerk would have supervisory authority over whom?
The town clerk would maintain supervisory authority over the the clerical person that's currently in that office, let's say. They would have one staff person that would report to them, the other position would have one staff person that would report to them. They basically each would have a a an executive assistant of some sort of clerk.
And so they have equal responsibility, just different responsibilities. Equal supervisory authority, report to manager versus ultimately report to the board.
Mm-hmm.
So what would? Would we effectively have two clerks, uh, what would the salary distinction or like, how would you, how would we distinguish them?
Yeah, the salary would probably not be as high as what the the prior town clerk was, let's say, who had full responsibility for all of those roles. Uh, it would be higher than what the program administrator position is now, because it would have certainly a a higher level of authority. Both those positions would probably come in relatively close on salary. And then each would have a a a clerk, I I kind of want to call it a clerk.
Assistant or some kind of admin.
Makes it because of admin staff. And where I would be able to make some of that up is right now. We're paying anywhere from, you know, two to four part-time people in any given time. Um, to supplement, that had been a five-person office several years ago, I don't think it needs to be that. But I think it needs to have fewer strong people. As opposed to a lot of frontline people where we could have one frontline person reporting to each. And and really get what we need covered, there'd be some logistical things to work through, no question. And the breaking out of the description, the job description, to ensure that there's an equality in the workload.
Yeah, I'm kind of um teasing this out more. Uh, I can see the merits in having two elevated positions where they can focus on the the job duties as needed and then really. Be able to like have those as their their niche core responsibilities, but generally, it's it's one department and I'm seeing this almost. Would create inherent conflict, um, because you'd have two. Authorities that are equal levels essentially with different ultimate reporting entities, you know, you, they both report to the manager, but. Ultimately, one is appointed by the Select Board and is kind of the whim of the board and therefore there's a different dynamic. And they're in the same office, but with their own distinct staff, I would.
Yeah, I I wouldn't necessarily have them in the same office. I would, I, for that reason, because there would be a lot of confusion on oversight. I I think that if if we did one, whoever is doing the, you know, however we divvy up whoever does the frontline. You know, the 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 more customer-related or customer interaction, and we have to look at what the state law allows for for clerks' roles and who has to do what. Does the town clerk have to cover certain things? I mean, it, as I said, it comes with some complications, no, I agree, you couldn't have two people. Reporting up equally in the same office with two separate staff that don't cross, however, I will say this. Their staff, all staff is cross-trained now, all admin staff is cross-trained. So right now, I have somebody from the assessors going over this week to help in the clerk's office. So the fact that I would have two people in there that would be cross-trained would not be unusual. It's more the upper level that would be the the challenge of having the distinct responsibilities. But I guess I would look at it no different than the town accountant is appointed by the board. And the internal auditor is appointed by me. So, but both answer to me or work with me on a day-to-day basis, it's just ultimately the appointing authority is different. I, it's complicated, I I think that you have two very viable options, you can go that way, we we certainly can make that work. And it would be unique, it would be, the the challenge we face in Stoughton is a lot of communities have canvassing clerks or election clerks. And it's a separate position in a very large community or in a city or or a small city, for example, we're just a really big town. Uh, but our charter clearly implies that our town clerk handles elections, it references it, those are the only actual only references. Outside of the appointment is uh elections and working with town meeting reps and gathering that information, that falls under the clerk. So we really, our town clerk is going to always sort of have the component of the elections clerk. If we didn't have that setup, we might have a town clerk and a separate canvassing division. Which would resolve a big part of the problem because it would take a huge load off of the clerk's office. But we just, we're just not set up that way by charter. The second option is to really beef out that program administrator role, make it a true assistant clerk. And um, just when we advertise it, look at, depending on what the board's choices for the town clerk position. Just ensure that we have complementary skill sets for the assistant clerk.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if I'm just a little more old school in the uh setup or what I'm leaning toward. I'm not sure, but I I think I I'm leaning more toward having the town clerk and then an assistant clerk. So that, you know, as a town clerk does the general oversight and has strengths in a lot of areas, assistant can really. Assist with it, provide additional skill, so on, without necessarily breaking it out into an entirely almost separate department. At the end of the day, uh, and then there can be those other two uh administrative support roles or if needed, or or just the one. I don't know, what other members of the board think about this, Mr. McChrisky, so you raised your hand? You're on mute, sir.
Sorry about that. Um, thank you, Madam Chair, I just, um, I would be concerned, I'd like to see a little bit more of a plan. Where this is a position of uh the the boards, it doesn't, yeah, the position in being the clerk does not report to the board of Select, uh, Select Board. Uh, does report to the town manager, uh, but I'd like to know a little bit more about um the full duties that is done. And as well as what state statute refers to a town clerk. What the town manager does within that department with people not appointed by the board is totally up to the town manager. We have, historically, we have had in the past, uh, an assistant town clerk. And uh, back when Jean Fleming was the, an assistant town clerk to Margaret Fitzpatrick, who the first war conference room was named after. So we've had assistant clerks in the past and it's, you know, it it, if anything, it does show uh a good hierarchy that if. The clerk wasn't there for some reason, the assistant clerk would act, you know, in her stead. Uh, so what the town manager decides to do in that department with people that are not appointed by the board is totally up to her in according charter. Uh, but I I I'm, I'd like to know more about. How these positions would be split and I have mentioned this to the town manager. And I'd be very cautious, I would like to make sure that what we do uh does not infringe on any authority. Uh, just making, you know, an honest error, not being aware of something, I'd like to make sure that if we're going to do something like that, we've researched that. And I guess for now, I I don't want to get off track, but I I would have some other things to say as we go along, but uh, so I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kavy, you raised your hand?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, so to your question of of uh, you know, what we think about these, I I actually, uh, you know, the more I think about this, the more I I'm like, I I. I find this to be a very elegant and creative solution to some of the needs of that department. And when I see the breakout of the differences between uh where the the department is succeed, excelling. And where it needs additional work, uh, there really is to me a very distinct difference, uh, in almost in. Uh, like the the managerial type, the uh uh skill sets needed to 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 uh do well in those those areas. So in the first one, I mean, I'll really just point out the first two, election performance and general town meeting assistance and support. Those are really very large projects, very uh large undertakings, and when you're, when you're doing those. Um, to be dealing with with uh more day-to-day things, uh, can be uh. Obstruction and one that we typically can't afford because we, our deadlines for both elections and town meeting are are set in stone. So uh, their importance is uh, the significance in in uh town government, it really can't be. Uh, understated or overstated here. Uh, with some of the areas where there's what was called slippage, right, where there's a little bit of uh, uh, areas, areas improvement. Include the very day-to-day tasks. It's um, the, you know, web presence, I T workflow, uh, turnaround time and requests. And, you know, it makes sense to me that if 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 we are putting, you know, the full attention that's necessary for elections and general town meeting. That these would be areas where we would have have this kind of slippage. And uh, you can't, you know, I I. When things were smaller and when things were honestly simpler, uh, I think you could, you could make this all work well enough. But um, our our problems now are far more sophisticated. Uh, what we are required to do and what what a a town clerk's office is required to do. With regard to both the the these large projects and also the day-to-day is uh, is is, I think, more than than. One person, one person should be held accountable for, I think that's that's the significance here, is I think that that uh. If we're, if we're going to set our priorities on which one's more important, uh, I would say, I think, honestly, as as uh, as sad as it is. I think the elections and the um town meeting is is honestly just more important, if it keeps us going. Uh, and the day-to-day stuff, I mean, if 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 I was in that department, that's what I'd be doing, I'd be focusing on that and making sure that doesn't fall apart. Uh, and if I wasn't able to turn somebody else's request for, you know, uh, a marriage license fast enough, uh, they just had to deal with it because we have. They just have to deal with it because we have these other things that are set in stone deadlines and we can't miss. So, you know, I, this has been really informative to me. It's really helping me kind of get inside the minds of the people who are working there. Trying to succeed and doing the best they can to do it. And for that reason, I feel like this is a really thoughtful and creative solution to this. That even to have the elections clerk be the appointing authority makes sense to me. Whereas the other components seem very strictly operational. Having that as something that the town board appoints. Is something that I would feel even more inappropriate or unnecessary. To appoint somebody who's, you know, dealing with customer service or something like that. It really sounds like something that the town manager should be far more concerned with. Licensing and things like that, like I, but our own jurisdiction includes components that are related to town meeting. And elections. So, I feel like that's something that makes sense for us to be the appointing authority for. I'm in favor of this. I think it's, as I said, elegant and creative solution. And, you know, honestly, I feel like we could move forward pretty quickly through the rest of this process. If this kind of division were to take place and the responsibilities, either as an assistant clerk or as a separate clerk position. Which I don't have any feelings about at all. But if.
That was my question on, Mr. Kavy, was you're either creating two equal positions where, who knows? Sort of division of authority there. They're not supervisor to each other. Versus creating the clerk and then an assistant clerk who would very clearly fall under that, what we want to call department head. I just don't know of any other departments where we split them and then create two department heads. I'm thinking like, you know, engineering, for example, we have the engineer and the assistant engineer. I've just never seen a clerk's duties to the point where you create the hierarchy like that. So, I would just, I'm just a little cautious about creating two essentially equal positions. I completely respect needing to handle the day-to-day, but also a lot of the delegating authority of that department head to help. Them run their department effectively and efficiently. Yes, they shouldn't be dealing with every single phone call if they have the election to get ready for. But they should be able to get their staff together to figure out how to handle those duties. And hopefully, we would have the appropriate staff in place that have the skill sets to fill some of the areas that need development. Such as more web presence or munis usage. So, I'm just concerned about creating two positions of equal authority. One that we appoint and one that is doing more day-to-day. And is directly, you know, under hired by the manager, but also supposed to work with the part. I'm just not able to kind of see how it would play out effectively. So, that's more my question. Less so the merits of ensuring that staff that can handle both, all the duties. And more so the division and organizational structure of the office.
I think, to your point, though, there isn't a separate appointment. We actually just recently have seen the separation of the DPW from the water department. Which typically had been only one department. And the director of the water department raised to a tier double with the DPW. That is an organizational restructuring. I didn't have a very hard time reconciling it. It made sense to me that those authorities could be separated without any sort of issues. But also with the clerk's office, I don't see necessarily there being any conflict. Or anything that draws my attention. Maybe that's a failing of mine. But I don't find anything about that difficult.
Let's give an example. What phone number do they call?
Right now, you call the town hall and the person who wouldn't have the clerk's office should be asked for the elections clerk or the vital statistics clerk. I'm guessing. And so, if you had an election question, you call, you dial, you know, one for elections and two for vital statistics. And I, this is not something that would be difficult, I think, to actually navigate.
I'm just, that would depend on the, yeah, and that would depend on the breakdown of how the work would break down. I can work either way with this.
Mr. Oregan, I saw you raise your hand. Thanks for joining us. Hopefully, we can hear and see you.
Honestly, in fact, I think that right now, when you call the town hall, it separates exactly that way. It asks if you want, if you're calling it for elections or for licenses or something like that. So, even right now, the call, even though it goes to the same department. Different departments theoretically, but they're the same people.
Bob, I can't hear or see you, so I'm not sure what's going on with your audio or video.
I'm able to see you, but I can't hear you.
I see you waving now, but I can't hear you. Okay, Ms. Roberts?
Until Mr. Oregan gets his, we can hear him. I do have a comment. I could see a town manager's vision in having two equal leadership roles. There would be separation of duties. It would be performance-based. They would have two distinct job descriptions. And it would allow each of those leaders to drill down, to run their departments efficiently. So, both, but I also see that both leadership roles would require strong technical skills. And provide good customer service. And the good customer service, it's not like the frontline customer service. But it's customer service to your departments, to your colleagues. It's to the citizens and to other departments. So, that's the good customer service I'm referring to. But technical skills is, should be a requirement in both of those leadership roles.
I think, you know, I can work more closely with Mary Beth to divide out those two descriptions, if you wanted to consider that. So, you might have a clearer vision. And, you know, some of it, we're going to have to look through some state statute just to see what it is, you know. Does, the clerk may have to officially certify some vitals that might be processed by somebody else. But I really, I'm trying very hard not to have silos with my directors. So that even if the actual town clerk has to certify something and put a stamp on it before it goes to the state. That's performed by the other position. They should be able to work together enough, whoever the people are, to do it. No different than I have that expectation of any of my directors. My police chief might have to have my fire chief sign off on something. That's okay. The fire chief works on grants and the police chief signs it. You know, I, I'm not terribly concerned about that. I think the biggest thing is really carving out the specific roles. And ensuring that each has a fair and equitable division of labor. And I think that's probably the bigger challenge for me in it. From a standpoint of proposing to you all specifically, how those would break down exactly. And Mary Beth is probably going to be a huge resource on pulling something like that together because of just what she has seen, you know, in various towns. But I, you know, either way, we redesign an assistant position or we create a second position. I mean, it really, obviously, it's the will of the board. It's the will of the board and it's not. I mean, I could always create a position through the budget with you all. But there's no need for me to if the will of you is to keep the clerk's position the way it is. And have me just hire an assistant. We can go, I can go either way. It's just that if the will of the board is to separate it out and try a different direction, we can do that. And that's the opportunity or option that I wanted to put in that initial, that initial evaluation that I gave you.
Mr. McCrisky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the town manager. Robin, I'm not looking to tie your hands at all. But I want to be sure that every single area of responsibility, under the definition of a town clerk. And applicable with, you know, national laws and code of federal Massachusetts regulations are adhered to. What you do inside that department, under the terms of the charter, is your responsibility. But my only concern is that we water down the town clerk's position. And then we find another problem like we've done in the past is that, you know, we end up saying, why, we should have known this before. So, if this is what you're going to do in that department, you know, how I feel about the, you know, a process or anything about the town clerk and so forth. It's irrelevant to the fact that that is your department under the terms of the charter. Like you have done at the DPW, you can reorganize, abolish, create commissions under your control. We don't appoint anybody in the DPW, so that's all in your playground. So, I just want to be sure in that we use suitable people that are qualified to make these decisions and to give us guidance. And if we use any consultant, that they are qualified to work on this. You know, we do have resources to available through us, through state government as well. Secretary of State's office would be one that is a resource. And then I don't have to tell you, you know where the other ones are. So, I just want to be sure that we're not just moving so fast that we do something that's going to bite us in the rear end.
Well, and I can tell you, there are certain things that the statutes do require, you know, the statutes, for example, elections, the town clerk has to certify. That, so logically, it goes with our charter that that stays with the clerk. Even if we had an elections clerk, the way I read the statute, the town clerk would still have to certify. So, even on the vitals, there are things, marriage license, whatever it might be. There may be things that the Commonwealth requires that the town clerk actually certifies. But on the day-to-day running of producing those and handling those, there's no reason one director-level person can't do that. And it goes over to a different division for final certification. I agree with you that we have to be careful of what the statutes are on that. But in no way does it mean that we can't have, I think my point is that my departments all have shared responsibilities and crossover now. There's a lot of crossover with my departments by design, frankly. Because when I came in, what I did see was very siloed departments. So, while this is a new sort of creation, it doesn't scare me that much from the standpoint of anybody who gets those jobs. If they want to be in those jobs, has to be willing to work on that shared level. It's not, you know, I'm moving, for example, in the DPW, Mr. Jafun is, and facilities are now moving all under DPW. That's a change, you know, that's a big change. He was reporting to me. He now reports to Tom. Can he still talk to me? We all work together. And if he can assist fill over in water, even though he's in DPW, I absolutely expect that he will. So, I'm not concerned about crossover. It's really, for me, the biggest thing is carving out the descriptions to ensure that we stay within the statute. That's, Mr. McCrisky, actually, for me, the thing I need to be the most careful of.
Right. And I'm not talking against that at all, but shared responsibility, when one person in the position. And I'll say that whoever the clerk is, if the clerk is responsible for a document being done correctly. And a subordinate or an assistant were to do that incorrectly, then the town clerk, you know, could be held liable. And I don't want to see that happen. So, with that, you're really taking on something that's never been done before. And that's why, you know, listening to the way this is playing out, you know, I have concerns. I have concerns. And I just think that we, we should take our time doing this. And make sure, and we use qualified people, which one of them is not me, you know, as to how you could do this. Because I believe, honestly, from the amount of research I've done on this subject, because I wanted to learn more on it. Is that I think there are some liability issues that we would be exposed to if we didn't make sure that we had backfilled a process. That would eliminate that from happening. And that's just my concern. And just from what I've read, that's why I'm asking this, is that I am concerned. And again, what you do in that department of putting people in there to, you know, to work as a team, that's great. And as I've said this publicly, you know, I like the job you're doing. You know, that you are making decisive decisions in all of your departments. What you did at the DPW was definitely outside the box. And I think for the good of the whole DPW is going to work well. And it works good for the residents of the town. But this one here, when it comes to a liability issue, I want to see it, and I think you know me on that end by now, is that I want to read things. And I want to see things before I vote on. And that, this one really does have me nervous. So, that's all I'm going to say about that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Oregan, I see you rejoined us. Hopefully, your microphone.
I'm sorry about that. I have difficulty if I do Zoom. Somehow, the Zoom program does not like Google. And so, I have issues that I have to figure out how to resolve. And I apologize for being late. The work thing keeps getting in the way. And so, I'm trying to catch up. And I appreciate if I could just make a couple of general observations about this position and where we are first. In case it hasn't been said, the statute requires an assistant town clerk to be appointed by the town clerk. So, if we talk about an assistant town clerk, we have to appreciate who the appointing authority is. And it isn't the town manager. It's not the board of selectmen. But zooming out from that, general observation, this conversation, the issues in the department. The issues in the department going back many, many years, you know, in series of tenures by different town clerks. Which is one of the things that the consultants report by Mrs. Bernard revealed. Is there have been some areas for improvement in that department that have not been met or even necessarily recognized. I think part of the problem there is that there are, and this is not a criticism with anybody who's got any of these jobs. Or any of that process. It is, I don't think a system where a select board as a policy board makes personnel decisions like this. When we are unable to, as a board, take the kind of, partake in the kind of activity that a supervisor of a hiring or appointing authority needs to do to bring about accountability and performance is fair. And I've evolved to a view that the only position the board of selectmen should appoint is the town manager and the auditor. And that every other office, every other position in town should be appointed by the manager. So that the policy of the board concerning the operation of the town is implemented by the manager. And this discussion is really illustrating the problem. And the report that we received illustrates the problem. Because in supervising the conduct of a particular employee, we don't have access to personnel files. And we shouldn't, because if we did, they would be public record. Performance evaluations that we might do have to be done in public, in an open session. That may not be fair to the employee or really a wise way to go about it. Our charter was written really before these sort of standards became the norm. And particular recent open meeting law decisions by the courts that require performance evaluations. By, you know, by a board to be done in a public setting. So, I think that's part of what we're grappling with here. Because if a manager had the authority to make an appointment like this. The kinds of structural issues to serve the public could be implemented. The supervision could happen. If it didn't work, adjustments could be made to make it work. And, you know, that would go about to a number of the appointments. That said, I share some of the concerns that I've heard about. If the board is going to take these steps, we need to be extremely careful in how we do it. I'm concerned about taking more time to do it. I'm concerned about creating more bureaucracy in the interest of supposedly having more efficiency. But making things more cumbersome for the town, for townsfolk to deal with not knowing which office to go to. I mean, those are all practical considerations. And my leaning now, frankly, is that we appoint a town clerk. I was hoping to get a departmental improvement plan with a little, the manager's report that I received today. Identified areas. identified areas that are working well and areas that need improvement. I was hoping to receive some better description of the skill sets when we hire, what skill sets we need to put in place in order to understand that, because as one of the five making the appointment, I'm going to be looking for the skill sets that we need to meet the development of the department that the manager has developed. I don't see that, you know, yet. Zooming back, all of this in a private setting with an individual appointment by a manager would be baked into that process. So that's where I am, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Ms. Roberts, so you had raised your hand before Bob rejoined us.
Oh, yes. My comment was in relation to what Mr. McChrisky was saying a few minutes ago. And, Mr. McChrisky, when Town Manager described the two roles, the two leadership roles separation, the way I reconciled it was how she described it. It's functionally, they would be separate. It's not that, which would be a problem, that one person, one leader, would have the front end of a process like election, and the second leader would have the back end of, say, election. That, those handoffs, that would be a true liability that would be very challenging to overcome. But if there were separation of duties, one leader did from end to end of election, and the second leader did from end to end of, let's say, records, there would be separation of duties, and that would mitigate some of the liability. So I just wanted to throw that in, and that's how I reconciled, and I can see Town Manager vision in that respect.
Madam Chair. Thank you. Ms. Roberts, I don't disagree with you. I'm going to pick up on what Select Board Member Oregan just stated. This is an appointment of the Board of Selectmen that has specific responsibilities under the terms of the town charter, mass general laws, and the code of Massachusetts regulations as well. I want to make sure that anything we're doing, that's our responsibility as select board members, to make sure that we do not put undue liability because we make a simple mistake. And it could happen. Like I said, as if somebody would have signed something off, the town clerk's position, if they were the one responsible for that duty and didn't sign it in error because somebody else did, and it caused a problem, the town would be held liable. Now, the town manager has full control of the clerk's office. Even the town clerk, once that town clerk is appointed, they work for her directly, they do not report to the board. I hear by some of the comments that I believe some people might think that, you know, they report to the board, as that was stated, the town clerk does not report to the Board of Selectmen, nor does the auditor, who we appoint as well. They stay under the daily supervision of the town manager. Like the auditor's position, Town Manager does not have the authority to change the duties and responsibilities under the terms of state law of any position, police chief that we appoint, the auditor that we appoint, and the, and now the clerk we're talking about. So that's my only concern, is that I believe, I believe we're moving too quickly. We really don't have a roadmap, we're all over the place. And, you know, I know and I do agree with the Town Manager on where she's going and the direction. I'm not saying, she has the right to do what she wants to do of reorganizing the department. I just want to make sure that a position that we appoint, you know, is protected from any kind of problems, and, you know, a better process, something that is a qualified process with somebody that has working knowledge of the general laws in the actual clerk's position. That's all I'm asking for. I'm not looking to tie the town manager's hands. I've been a vocal supporter of the efforts of the Town Manager and the changes that she's made since she's been here. All I want to do is, this position is ours to appoint. It has nothing to do with politics or people going to people, it's protecting the position of town clerk. I know the Town Manager will do that, that's why I'm bringing it up. I just want to make sure that when she moves forward, that that is reportable to the board, that we have consulted somebody, we have not, we have done our research on the laws, you know, affecting a town clerk's position, and we can, she can do what she wants inside the office, that's her job. I just want to protect the position from our standpoint, that's all.
And if I might, section 4115, I think, is the town clerk duties and powers. And what I would do is, anything that we did do in a split or a structure at all, we would run through somebody like Lauren Goldberg to take a look at that statute and compare it side by side with what authority we would or would not be having in the clerk's hands, just to ensure. It pretty much focuses more on elections, and it does talk about certification of instruments with the courts. So again, it's that final certification of, let's say, license, marriage licenses, for example. But the actual day-to-day processing of those, it's not specific that that belongs in any one person, you know, with any one person. But we would certainly review that with town council, no question.
I just want to make the point that this was discovered years ago, and right now, the town clerk, I believe, and maybe the Town Manager, appoint the people who do the poll takers. If you do your research in the general laws, those appointments are actually supposed to be made by the select board. And the select board does not do those. So that's all I'm saying. Now, it's not a big deal that that doesn't happen. But in that, the fact that it's working now, that's, I don't want to have something that's bigger be hidden that we didn't address. And that issue was raised years ago, and I know that should be, you know, unless the law changed just recently. It was the law, and it was brought to someone's attention, and they changed how they were doing things. But again, it never bothered me because the job was getting done. You know, poll workers were being, you know, appointed by the clerk's office, the job was getting done, and that's great. But that, the only reason I bring it up is because I know that's there, and if somebody wants to prove me wrong, I don't want to be accused of being a liar. You know, I, you know, look at it, and let's see, that's the only thing I'm trying to do is, because I know that's out there, and we don't follow that process. So I just want to make sure that we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's if we're going to do this, so that we don't have somebody, you know, without any knowledge, make the wrong decision. That's going to be something, if you want to split these, I have to put that on you and make sure that it's being done correctly, because this is your idea. So I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. I mean, I, yeah, I think, as others have expressed, we would really need to see how these two positions, how the duties would be broken out. I'm still having a hard time kind of reconciling how the ultimate signing authority on different things is not overseeing the process that's being conducted by the staff person. You know, the department head ultimately is responsible, and then the staff works under them. And as was stated, that department head reports to the manager, and obviously has to live up to the manager's expectations. So I'm just seeing it from a sort of hierarchical or organizational standpoint. It's challenging for me to understand how it would be broken out in a way that those are not, those are two separate direct reports to the manager as opposed to within each other. So I think having the two job descriptions at least built, you know, built out, and as Ms. Roberts pointed out, a lot of these things cross over. We'll still need clerks who know how to use UNIS and update websites and have customer service and staff coordination and turnaround time and organizational skills and time management and task management and supervisory ability and management skills of their staff, you know. It's not unique to a specific position, it would just be changing some delegation of duties in my mind. So that's where I'm kind of, I just need a little bit more information to kind of understand it. And as Mr. Regan pointed out, you know, what skill sets exactly? In our draft job description that we received, the skills in here are not really, under the knowledge, ability, and skill section, I think we want to sort of build that out, you know, it just kind of has some broad items right now. But if we want to say, like, you know, proficient use in UNIS, or, you know, equivalent accounting software, proficient use in licensing software, I think we want to build that in, if that's the direction we're going with this individual. Actually, have some specific skills that are, look for, need in that position, drawn out, and we can add into this job description.
So effectively, it's really three job descriptions you need to make a decision. It's two potential with a split or one total. And frankly, the one total is going to be everything that's in the two, because then that clerk is going to delegate it to the number two person. And Mr. Regan's right, we really can't call it an assistant clerk. Maybe that's why they changed it to a program administrator at some point or another, because it is a point, the assistant clerk officially is appointed by the clerk. So, you know, if the appointing authority is going to stay with the town manager on that, we would have to come up with another name, but that's easy enough. Naming a position is the least of the concerns, I think. But it really is three different job descriptions. It's two if we have two sort of smaller, if you will, or less intensive positions, or one very intensive, and that person's going to delegate to the number two person. Where I'm concerned, I'll tell you where I'm concerned. I don't, I'm not comfortable bringing in a number two where I'm telling the department director what they're going to assign to the number two. That really isn't a normal situation for me. You know, we're hiring for an assistant fire chief, I'm not telling Chief Larracy, these are the skill sets the assistant fire chief is going to have, and this is what you're going to assign to him. So this is where the appointing authorities, it is unique, because as Mr. Kavy points out, you have a board appointing one position, and you have me structuring or designing and appointing another. Obviously, I would appoint in conjunction with whoever the town clerk would be if you went that way. I would never appoint without the inclusion of that person, and it would be a hiring team, because that number two position would be really important. But for me to assign a job description with the specific skill sets, it really would be premature, because all of those skill sets should go into the director's position to then be delegated. I see Mary Beth nodding, I think she knows where I'm going with this. It would be very hard for me to write a description for that second position until the first position is in place, and it's going to include everything. So whatever I put into two separate descriptions, just combine them, and there's your one description, and then what's going to get delegated to the number two. But it should be delegated by the number one person, not by me.
Madam Chair. Thank you. Through you to the town manager, you just brought up specifically one of my concerns, is that the previous speaker had mentioned that the statute allows the clerk to appoint an assistant town clerk. So I'm concerned, just because a previous administration decided to call everybody program administrators doesn't mean it was legal. So I would not, I would want to know that are you allowed to appoint somebody and basically circumvent the authority of the clerk to do so?
Well, we can remove, we don't, we're not required by statute to have an assistant town clerk, and somewhere along the line, the town decided not to have an assistant town clerk and to have a program administrator serve in an advanced capacity in that office. So that is within the law.
Right, but just the fact that that was done doesn't rubber stamp it to be true. That's my concern. I want to make sure we look at these things so that it doesn't come back and bite us later on. That's all, I just want to make my point, because when you said it that way, that's just the type of stuff that another select board member is saying, you know, on the statute. And now we're going to appoint somebody, when you say, who does it, doesn't really matter. That's my other concern, is if we have a quote-unquote "program administrator" doing these things, and they fail in some capacity, I don't want to have us have a problem that now it falls on the clerk or the town because the error was done by somebody that shouldn't even have the job. Again, all I'm saying is, I want you to make sure that we're protected, because this is your idea. This is our appointment to make. But if you're going to change things, I want, you know, the certification from you, that you've worked with this, this is good information, it's qualified by a person who's trained and, you know, positioned to make those decisions and give us the guidance. So again, not looking to step on your toes, but as we talked, and I said I was done a minute ago, I was a minute ago, then this came up. So I'm saying is, that's my concern. I don't want anybody to think I'm, you know, doing anything for any other reason to make sure that it's a liability, because I don't like this process. I think that if we were going to do this, it should have started a year ago. You know, and it should have been done by now. Okay, so that's a political on the side note, but again, Madam Chair, thank you. I'm done. This time for, until somebody prompts me again.
All right. Yeah, I mean, I guess if we can get those three job descriptions, that will help guide us. My vision for any, like, any department is, take, for example, a CFO, you have your CFO, and then under them is town accountant, treasurer, collector, you know, and then the ancillary staff to those positions. And CFO oversees and makes sure those duties are completed in time. And then ultimately, it might be the signer on contracts or signer on certifying different things and so on and so forth. And obviously, has to help manage a lot of those tasks, but isn't necessarily that the staff underneath aren't totally unskilled and unable to do anything. You then fill those positions based on the skill set you're seeking. So that's how I envision a hierarchy within the department. And I'm just, I need to see these job descriptions and this organizational layout to get a better grasp on what it would mean to split this up versus just hire the staff that we need to assist the department in running its operations. Ms. Roberts?
Oh, one final comment. You mentioned earlier, Madam Chair, that you should build into the job description something about knowledge of UNIS or knowledge of the system that they're going to use. So whatever proprietary system that is going to be required. But that leads to the next part of our discussion, which is interviewing. How are you going, how are you going to judge who is the better candidate for knowing UNIS or whatever this system is? Are you going to ask them to take a test and say, well, whoever was more efficient or got it done quicker and with less error rate, then that would be the top candidate? So we should discuss that as well. Not on this phase, but that next phase of that conversation.
If I could address that, I think, you know, you talked earlier about having an interview team, me set up a preliminary team internally, and then make recommendations of a top few candidates to you all. There's absolutely no reason that we cannot have some type of test for all candidates. It could include UNIS, it could include a customer service component, it could include a knowledge of vital statistics, state statutes, whatever it might. There's no reason that there cannot be a testing tool to determine who would be the best candidate for Stoughton. And, or who would be several of the best for me to put forward to you for to then be interviewed, because again, it is a public interview process. The test scores wouldn't necessarily have to be part of a public discussion, but it would give the board, ultimately, it's all publicly available, but it would at least give the board some concrete analysis. And, you know, there's certainly, and frankly, those tests sometimes benefit internally, sometimes they benefit external. I think it offsets, I think the benefits for each internal or an external candidate, in many ways, each benefited some way or another from it. External candidates may have seen more, internal candidates might have a better knowledge, for example, of how the systems work specifically to Stoughton, and those are, that's where, you know, you as a board would then have to take the interview process from there and take the top few candidates if that's what you wanted to do. But I do think a written test component, and I have thought about this, and I do think a written test component in the preliminary interview round is not a bad thing. I, you know, a familiarity with towns about our size, a familiarity with how things work in a community like Stoughton, the public communication aspect of it, the direction that the town is going. External or internal candidates should have done enough research to know that and understand that. So there's no reason why I would not put some test component together to at least, you know, put a top list of people. It's not going to be a pass/fail, and, you know, you're out. But it would certainly at least assess skill sets that we need in town.
Thank you. Mr. McChrisky, I see you, your one minute is up.
I'll make a deal with the town manager, if she stops talking, I will.
I know, I can't continue tonight, Joe, we're not good for each other tonight.
You just brought up my concern, is that you said you thought of a test. This is an appointment of the board, that's something we'll decide.
No, but I've been asked, but, but the board asked me to create an initial interview team and an interview process.
Okay, but did we, did we identify who the team was going to be?
Not yet, no.
Because you did mention as well.
I thought you left it to me. I thought, I thought the vote was that the, that I would pick the internal team if I recall, but I'm, I don't care who you, I, you guys can pick it, I don't care.
I, I guess that might have been the meeting I was not able to be at. And I would have said this, is that I don't want, this is just me personally, we have a good staff, I know we do. But if we're going to pick a team, I don't think that an internal team should consist of any current town employees. That's dangerous, in my opinion. You know, especially where this is our appointment, if we want to use somebody, I want to use people that are qualified to make those decisions. We have great staff, but they're not cross-trained in, in being able to make these decisions. So I don't have a problem if the town manager wants to pick a staff and the board, you know, approve that. But I'd want to make sure that, I, I'm sorry, I just have a real problem that I think it's very dangerous for us as a community as a whole, but it's up to the town manager to do what the charter allows her. But this is an appointment of the board of selectmen. I personally don't want to see other town employees deciding who's going to make the final cut on a position that they're going to work with. And, you know, and we've talked about something similar to this. That's why I said I just want to make sure this process is the right way. It deserves a lot more conversation than we're giving it. It's almost like we've, we haven't done the job we should do in the last year, so we're trying to make up for it in a matter of months. You know, so that we can stay on, on course. Madam Chair, I agree with you, and, and I think I agree with you in a different way, uh, but we're on the, in the same area, is that I want to see more. I want to know what the process is. To me, I, I feel like we're shooting craps against the curb here, you know, and it's not the way to do it. Not accusing anybody of, of doing anything wrong, but, you know, I've, I've been critical of people in the past when I see, what I feel is a lack of a process. Where I, we're here, we're working, we're trying to work through it. And I think it's very dangerous for people who are supposed to work as a team, being included on a per, on a, a board or a review for somebody that's going to be their coworker.
What do you suggest as an alternative to that? Because my thinking was, I think, I put screening committee on this because obviously if 50 resumes come in, us five aren't going to sit through on a meeting and go through 50 resumes to narrow it down. So, what do you envision, Joe, as like the alternative to the town manager's suggestion of an interview panel of staff?
Madam Chair, we've already gone down this rabbit hole and I think it's too late to turn back now. I would rather see somebody that's not connected to the town. If we use a consultant that has no relationship with anyone, has not worked for the town before, is qualified to make these decisions, and let them pick, you know, some people, just like we've done in past police department appointments. They get their peers, and their peers come in. And they, we have qualified people in the quote unquote clerk's world that would make that decision so that everything is done. Because I, I am concerned, as and I mentioned this before, how it will look. And that the board cha- changed the policy or did something differently. I want it removed. I want it removed from political and I want it to come forward and say, based on this criteria, this is the best person for the job. And none of the five sitting members of, of the select board had any influence other than to vote for the best candidate. Because we all know things are being talked about. I don't think a lot of it's true, you know, but still, people are talking. I want the process to be clean from that.
So what I'm hearing.
And that process would also alleviate my concerns about when, you know, we're not going to get into any issue that might bite us later on, you know, through statutes or the, the CMA. So.
So does, what hearing you say is the screening committee of some kind comprised of peers, clerk peers basically, so other, potentially other clerks across the state and an outside consultant?
Right, I mean, we've done it before and, you know, it would be somebody that has no, no personal connection to anybody that's going to be a candidate so that we get a 100% objective view from people that have done the job or are doing the job. You know, and say, this is the way to go. Because then, whatever we do and then whatever the town manager does, we're in your responsibility after that. We can know that we, we did due diligence and if there's the problems that we, you know, where we think we could be better at, that's definitely going to come up. It'll definitely come up. And, you know, if there's somebody that scores good or not good on it, that's going to be something that we didn't do, that's going to be based on people that are qualified in the field. I once, one time said it to an engineer who puts up buildings. Uh, I do construction, transportation, risk mitigation. And I said to him, don't tell me what I know, and I won't tell you what you don't know. I said, if you put a steel beam in the, in the ground to hold up a building, it's going to stay there for years. If I put it up there and it's 100 feet high, you want to be 150 feet away from it in each direction, okay? I feel that we've got to get somebody that knows what they're doing, not somebody that thinks just because we're on a select board that we have this divine intervention of his expertise. Let's count on the people that know this stuff better than us, so.
Mr. Oregan?
In listening to Mr. McCrisky, there's, uh, there's two layers. One layer is to screen applicants who do not meet the criteria that are posted. And the second layer is of those who satisfy the hi- the minimum hiring criteria sifting through forward the board, candidates for the board to evaluate. And, and I agree that that's a worthwhile process to follow. I agree that the, uh, the board should not be involved in that screening process at all. I think that some citizens of the community should be involved in that screening process. After all, this is a town clerk for the people of the town of Stoughton. Uh, there are technical aspects of this position, so I appreciate that we would want some technical expertise so that the, the knowledge of what should happen in a town clerk's office by someone who has actually done it is part of the selection process. So I would, I would, uh, I would agree with, with, with Mr. McCrisky's approach with the caveat that, uh, a screening committee uh, should include one or more residents of the town. How we select that, uh, there, there's, uh, there's a lot of interest in this appointment. And I believe, uh, uh, so i- if the board does, uh, decide to involve residents, it should be someone who they're satisfied, or people who we are satisfied are neutral as to any internal or resident applicants and just committed to, uh, recruiting and engaging the most qualified person for the, for the job. But I think those are the steps that seem to make sense. And, and fairness to the, to the residents, excluding residents from the screening, I think would be an unfortunate decision. But other than that, it makes sense. It's going to take some time, but hopefully we get a, a good result out of it. The, the investment of time is, is, is worth a good result if we get one.
Madam Chair, just to briefly respond to Mr. Oregan, where you directed the comment to me.
Please keep it brief, Mr. McCrisky.
Yeah, I will, I understand you correctly to say that, you know, you would believe, and I'm not, this is what I would like, I, I don't know if you're in agreement, that anybody that does serve as a resident must state that they don't know any of the candidates?
No, that, no, no, no. This is the challenge for this appointment. It isn't that people don't know. It's that whoever would, would be on this, uh, we are satisfied is able to make an independent assessment of the applicants. And that's the challenge, even if they do know any of the applicants. That, um, and I think every one of us in our professional and personal lives have encountered people who, and even in this position, um, decisions are made, people know some of the folks who are applying. And you make the best call you make based on what it is that's needed for the position. Maybe despite the fact that you know people. It may not be attainable, but, um.
It would need to clarify, no. You know, when I say that is they can't be too closely tied.
I don't think a member of the House, a business associate, uh, you know, the, and that would be a judgment call at the time of the, of the, um, of, of the selection. The fact that people may know one another is, you know, of, of one another or be acquaintances is one thing. I think friends, no, that creates an inherent appearance of, of conflict. People who belong to the same church or belong to a social club. A lot of steps away from that, but, but the probing would say, the questioning, like, okay, like if you pick, I mean, life, we all don't live separately and completely insulated from everybody. We can't, we can't pretend in picking this that to- total strangers. So we have to respect the residents. And we have to find, if, if we want to go about this way, um, have to, have to ask people who would like to serve to be people who can honestly say to us, say like a juror does, you know, um, we're able to give an honest assessment, are you biased or not? Now, there's some probing on whether or not that's true. But there's an essential element of trust that I believe most often occurs where people honestly say, I don't, um, I may know of, I may know about, but I, but I can make the decision openly. Certainly, uh, that would be a worthwhile thing in the town.
Okay, you just, you just nailed it. You took that much and nailed it in that, that you said, like a juror. Okay, that's, if we're going to hold people to that, that's what I'm looking to hear. Because again, there will be people that will say things. I would, I want it to be totally something that somebody can make an objective. And I, I should have thought, remembered, you know, I'm going to state things to people that know. We know a lot of people, we know a lot of people but really don't know them, we know who they are. That's it. So, I, I like your end of it, I'm satisfied, thank you very much.
In the interest of, um, doing this, um, Mr. Oregan and Mr. McCrisky, would you be interested in working together to put to- put together the screening committee?
Sure. Madam Chair, I'll just say right up front, I would not want to do that. Uh, I've been on the board so long, I know both of the in-house candidates that would be going part in, and I would rather not be a part of that. Uh, because I don't, I do not believe it would be helpful for the town or the candidates. So I would thank you for mentioning that, but I would respectfully request to not be, um, voluntold, as they say.
Well, I understood, just to make sure I understand, this would not be to be on this screening committee, but to design it. So that if, if we, Madam Chair, would be that, um, you come back and say, I'm just going to throw this hypothetically, the screening committee should consist of five people. Three of them should be professionals in the area of X, Y, Z. One of them should be, at least one of them should be a current or former, uh, town clerk in a community of a similar profile to Stoughton. And one resident of the town with the following criteria, including, um, knowing everything about everybody but saying that nothing really counts. Be completely, uh, completely i- independent. And then we come back with a design, but we don't participate in the screening, we just come back with a design. Is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
Again, I would respectfully deny to be a part of that. I just, I know where, I know where it's going to come from, you know, where it'll come at me. And I don't want to have any influence or any involvement in the process that I think is going to add. Say it that way. I, I've been here a long time, folks. There are people that think they know me, but don't know. Uh, you know, I've been accused of a lot of things and I don't want to have that happen to this process. So I hope that you want to.
Can you incorporate all your feedback on the screening committee into its design?
Thank you.
Did you want to make a comment?
To the extent that, that people, uh, would trust me to, to help with this, I'd be happy to. Uh, but the one thing I would, I would be concerned about is, uh, doing this. And what, what I want to avoid, and I think Mr. McCrisky can appreciate it, including this in other areas, is coming up with this and then, uh, bringing it to the board. Having so many, you know, predictions and coming around so many times, but this takes, uh, longer than it ought to. Uh, so, I, I'm not sure how to mitigate that, but I would like to avoid that as much as possible. That requires us to send a copy out, you know, well in advance of the meeting. And any comments, get back so we can, we can address them, uh, before the meeting. That'd be great. I just, uh, I, you know, I, I know there's, there, um, is a strong sentiment that this is taking too long. And I'd like to make sure that it doesn't take any, any longer than it has to, if, if people feel comfortable with that. So, I'll, I'll leave that up to the, the, the board if they feel comfortable with me joining. And, and to the, to the extent that we, um, uh, do this, I will also want to make sure that, that what we present to you, uh, doesn't require multiple provisions.
And I'm get, I'm getting the sense that it's more likely than we're, that you're going to go with a, a, a single town clerk setup. Likely, I mean, I'll still do the separate descriptions for you if you would like, but it sounds to me that the direction the board would be going, if you're going through this process all out, is that you're leaning that way. I think we would need a screening committee regardless for our appointed position in hiring. I don't envision us able to go through resumes and narrow down. But I think, once we have that composition of the screening committee, and then once we have those three descriptions to kind of review and see which direction we want to go, that'll probably be the, the focus of our next meeting on this. The folks kind of agree with that. I'm not sure when that meeting will be. The first is getting rather full already, so we may have to have a special meeting. Let me just pull up the calendar here.
I'm free on Christmas.
Yeah, I mean, Thursday, anybody have any plans?
I'll make dinner.
The first is rather full and it's kind of a quick turnaround with the holiday. And the eighth, obviously, we're going to be moving into our, our budget items. I mentioned earlier that the, um, the school committee may want to have a special meeting with us on the ninth.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, what was the, what would be the purpose of that?
Uh, to discuss the budget. Want to have a budget round table sit down with them and not have to make them sit through a two-hour, uh, meeting first. So they're having a public hearing on their budget on the eighth. And then as we get, you know, budgets presented to us, I want it to be able to, the school committee come in and present their budget.
I would like to add, I would like to add a discussion of the public safety building sighting to that meeting. If we're sitting with them, that topic should be included.
I can ask them if they'd be willing to do that. So pending that, uh, that leaves.
Boy, and then we could say, I'm, I'm going to make a black joke, but I can't resist it. We won't take up their budget until they talk to us about the public safety side.
All right, we're getting a little off-topic, up-scheduling the town clerk's positions, so, um. Are clerks available on, we do Monday the seventh, then we're meeting Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but, um. I have a meeting on Thursday and so does Mr. Oregan. Are you all willing to, uh, do some, some meetings the week of the sixth? Well, I'll, I'll send the date out there and if you reject it, then so be it, but, um.
I've had no place else to be, so I'll, I'll go to any meeting.
Thank you. Well, at least with them being from home, I don't have to get somebody to cover feeding the barn, so I can do the barn into a meeting and it's a little easier. Dr. Grimm, does that work in terms of timing, uh, on those jobs?
Yeah, the jobs, the job descriptions split will basically be relatively easy. We'll take a full job description, Mary Beth sent some over and, and it's, it's easy enough to find town clerk job descriptions. And then I'm just going to split it per the statute, what can be split and what appropriately with the skill sets we have that I think how we could split it. I'd just give you those, that's pretty straightforward.
The skill sets is what we want to, um, make sure we, we kind of build out, Stoughton-specific, um.
Yep.
And Dr. Grimm, uh, would you mind, uh, running it by town council just to make sure that, that, uh, any, any concerns about statutes is, is addressed?
Absolutely, yeah, no, we'll throw that out to, to Lauren Goldberg to take a look at.
Thank you very much.
Anything else on this topic before we move on to our next item? Okay, right on schedule.
Thanks, Mary Beth.
Yes, thank you, Mary Beth, I know you're on there, appreciate you calling in. Um, FY22 budget, uh, we have a draft calendar, and, uh, Mr. Regan recirculated the policy for accepting town meeting articles. Um, so, Mr. Regan, if you want to start with the draft two that you circulated to the board, and just quickly summarize the changes that were incorporated?
Uh, the gist of the, thank you, madam chair, the gist is that I reorganized it to, to, um, highlight areas that, uh, the board expressed concern over in the last meeting. There's one additional sentence that I, I think it dropped out, which is that, um, all submissions, it would be in electronic form, um, which I would put in, you know, at, at the top. Why? Because the, the idea behind, one of the ideas behind this is to give the select board, you know, some real substantive information before we inserted an article. And then, once we had that, um, that package would then go to the town meeting, the moderator and town meeting rep, so they would start off with some background rather than what has happening in, in the past, which is, you know, those of us who've gone to, and the committee meetings, uh, it begins with, tell us what this is about and why we should do this. Uh, and there's an information gap, so we, 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 we fill that in. Um, I think one of the dates I had was, uh, just, uh, mindlessly incorrect, uh, on the due date for the town manager's, uh, budget submission. Mr. KB kindly pointed out that, um, um, it's due, I think, December thirty-first. We can, we get it the first business day, and I just, um, which is January second, but I, um, uh, I just went by, uh, I wrote on that one. Otherwise, the, the, the purpose of the revision is to break out and make clearer, um, what's involved and what's not involved in this policy.
Because New Year's Eve is D-Day for me. And New Year's Eve twenty-twenty, that's okay, frankly.
Will we be able to tell which departments you were dealing with closer to ten-thirty, eleven at night than at, uh, one o'clock in the afternoon?
I might leave some till then. And I hope my team's listening.
But that, that's how I would, uh, I, I, I would describe it, madam chair, thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments on the draft policy circulated by Mr. Regan, the updated draft? I just wanted to point out that this, um, is for all articles with the exception of petitioned articles. I know, uh, Mr. McCrisky, you had a concern about the placement of petitioned articles in the warrant, but this does not speak on that, and it does not, uh, address, uh, petitioned articles. So, it would only be a policy for other articles as presented by staff and boards and committees, um.
No comments, madam chair.
I do, uh, I do have a, a couple of comments with Dr. Gilari. Uh, so, within the scope of this document, I think that's probably appropriate, because it's really talking about, like, you know, all, all of the, the, uh, policies to get the, uh, warrant assembled, uh, but not necessarily, um, put together. In fact, charter even says that, you know, that, that is done at the, um, you know, it's like, we're just to organize it however they want. Uh, so, but having, having a, some sort of a, of a, you know, rule of thumb or set of guidelines, uh, I think would be helpful. And, uh, uh, one, you know, set of policies and guidelines, with guidelines, that, um, aim to be fair and neutral to, uh, to, uh, petitioned articles especially, uh, I think is, is really vital. So, if, uh, if it's something that, that, if the board will allow, then I'd love to take some time. I'd love to work with Mr. McCrisky on this, to create those kind of guidelines, in an effort to, to, uh, provide us a framework for doing this, um, in a way that's fair. I think, I think his, his, uh, concern is legitimate, I think it's one that we should take, take seriously.
I'd love to work with you, Steve, thank you.
Yeah.
That'd be, that'd be great, thank you both.
Madam Chair, one, want to add to what the board said, this, it explicitly states that, um, uh, collective bargaining agreements and, and TIF agreements are excluded from this, because those are two important areas that are very often outside the control of anybody who brings forward, uh, a warrant article. One of the things we do not want to do is discourage economic development by saying, anyone who wants to invest in the town has to know, you know, eighty-five months in advance whether or not they want to in order to make a, a warrant. So, but that's why those two are specifically excluded.
I appreciate that, that's, that's critical. I, I'd have to wait six months for a contract because we missed something by a couple weeks, it's very challenging.
Go ahead, Ms. Roberts.
Oh, I was just agreeing that I thought the document, the policy now addresses my concerns, um, especially the section about complete submission for fair consideration of the proposal. If, that was very, um, very clear and well thought out. So, I do not have any edits and nor additions to the policy.
Anyone prepared to make any motions on the policy?
I will, I think that we accept the policy as written.
Madam Chair, would the motion include a revision to include, as I said, the two oopses? One, that all submissions are in electronic form, and then, uh, correct the date to coincide with the impact in the charter from the manager's budget?
Yes, I amend my motion to include that language.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to adopt the sort of policy for town meeting warrant articles with the changes, as described, made by Ms. Roberts, seconded by Mr. KB. Is there additional discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none, on the most, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
No.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Yep.
Motion passes four yes to one no. Thank you, Mr. Regan, for your work on that.
And, madam chair, just so it's clear, may we, may I make a motion that the schedule for activity prior to January one become effective for annual town meeting two thousand twenty-two?
Motion made and seconded, um, correct, Mr. Regan, would allow folks to have a little more flexibility in this budget side, the first amendment. And we've just adopted the policy, December one is, I mean, we're six days away. So, um, I think that's my understanding of the purpose of that motion. Is there additional discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none, motion, uh, made by Mr. Regan, seconded by Mr. KB on that motion. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
No.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. KB?
Yes.
I vote yes, that motion passes four to one. All right, um, Dr. Grimm or, uh, Deborah Blank, if we can get this policy on our, um, our town page and, um, hopefully circulate it, I don't know if, circulate it to their respective boards or liaisons too, um, and will hopefully be able to share it with boards and committees. A couple other items, uh, the budget calendar, and continuing our budget discussion. Um, KB circulated a draft budget calendar, um, are you, I can pull that up?
Yeah, I can pull up, actually, I didn't circulate it to the full board here, I, I circulated it to, uh, to you and also to the other boards, uh, in comments. So, I'll, I'll, I'll share it, I'll give you guys just a brief update of what, of what I put together. Um, let me shoot the screen.
Sorry, sorry to throw you under the bus there, I, uh.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that people weren't looking forward to their inboxes. Um, but I, but I'll happily pass this on to everybody, I'll give you a basic idea of who I've, what I've done so far. So, um, hopefully you're able to see my screen.
Yep.
And, uh, a couple questions I want to know is, you know, what date are you looking at? What exactly is happening on that date? Uh, who's delivering it, who's receiving it? The owner of this transfer, uh, which, these are all, uh, a for, uh, comment if anybody wants to change it. And to the extent that they're, these are by statute, I just wanted to include the statute and then the rule, the, the actual statute itself, it tells you why it's, you know, why I picked the dates that I did. Uh, so, and also you'll see within the, within the charter, you'll see whether or not it's a fixed date, like December thirty-first, or if it's a, uh, a variable date, where it's, you know, the third Tuesday of, of, or whatever. Uh, so, that is, uh, hopefully everything everyone needs. Uh, we can go through these in a second, but I just want to let you know that I passed this along to a number of other, uh, stakeholders, uh, the town manager, I, I sent a copy to her, uh, also to the town accountant, uh, and the town planner, uh, uh, with the chair of the select board, the, uh, chair and vice chair of the school committee, chair and vice chair of the finance committee, the town moderator, and the deputy town moderator, uh, chair and vice chair of the planning board, and chair and vice chair of the CTC. And the efforts, and I asked them to, to, uh, to provide me with, uh, any dates that they are looking for people to, to, uh, due dates, people who look, they're looking for people to honor, uh, as we go through this process, uh, so that everybody can be aware of them. And, uh, I, I asked for that by this, this coming Sunday. Uh, we'll incorporate those, and then we'll have, uh, the full, hopefully the full population of, of dates and due dates. Uh, if, if, uh, you know, I'll, I'll continue to, uh, to hound people after that, if, if necessary, that I don't get responses back. My hope is that they'll take it seriously, uh, we've certainly heard a lot of complaints, uh, if something wasn't provided, uh, by a certain time. And I think now's the time for them to tell us what that is. Uh, and I think everyone will, will make some effort to honor that if they, if they. I, I certainly will, uh, okay, so, what we have right now is we have the presentation of the preliminary budget by the town manager, uh, to, to us, uh, on the eighth, presentation of revenues, uh, town manager to us, also on, uh, with, these are our, not by statute, uh, presentation of capital items on the fifteenth. Uh, now, this is the submission of the school, uh, fiscal year budget. This is, uh, by custom, actually, this wasn't originally on there, but in asking people to review my work also to make sure I didn't make any mistakes, uh, Bill, the town accountant, uh, did mention the fact that even though it's due on the forty-first by statute, they typically have given it us to us in the middle of, of December, uh, so that we can actually make the, the, uh, turnaround. Uh, I picked the fifteenth arbitrarily, just because we also have someone on the fifteenth, but middle of December is more or less when this is due. And that's actually going from the town, uh, from the school committee to the town manager. Uh, charter asks that, that, that gives the method of transmission. Uh, so then we have, it's in court, includes both warrant and also town meeting duties, by the way. But the warrant holds, closes for petitioned articles on, on the thirty-first. The warrant closes for, um, uh, any budget articles on the thirty-first. And, uh, uh, the, the submission of town, uh, fiscal budget is due on the thirty-first, and the school committee, uh, due to town manager on the thirty-first. So, as, uh, Dr. Grimm mentioned, uh, we actually have one more, submission of, of other budgets. This is where any other town board office, officers or committees provide a, uh, a budget. It's actually the, like, statute have to provide the finance committee, not necessarily to us. So, that's kind of interesting. Um, anyway, the thirty-first, December thirty-first is, is a big day. Uh, I think we should have a, um, a test money where, rather than a ball dropping, let's have a pile of paperwork dropping on, on the town manager's desk. Uh, yeah, all that, the, the people responsible have listed on here. January seventeenth, the, uh, town manager, uh, has to provide, has to submit all capital requests. Uh, all the, the, uh, submission of the, uh, town budget is, is due from the select board to the finance committee. On, now, this one was, it was, it was one that was, oh yeah, so I think it's the next one. So, this is where warrant copies for the select board, so, uh, uh, so warrant closes for the select board. Uh, and this one was, I guess, delivered by the select board, or is it a current select board? But we have to ultimately, uh, close the, uh, closes, uh, by, by February second. Uh, this next bylaw was, um, I applied only to the, to the warrant, but it, this one might be a case where it actually has to be done, uh, by a different process. The bylaw itself says that, uh, after each article has been accepted for inclusion in the warrant, whether by petition or at the request of the select, a copy shall be forwarded within two working days to the committee of finance and taxation and the rules committee. Um, I, I took that to mean when the warrant closes, that's when, when they have been accepted for inclusion. Uh, if, if, uh, if that's interpreted some other way, uh, I just ask you guys to pay, pay special attention to that to make sure that we're, we're fulfilling that, that two-day, uh, turnaround. And it's not here twice, because one case is due to the finance committee, and then it's also due to the rules committee. Uh, so, distribution of the annual town meeting warrant, uh, if I'm understanding the charter correctly, that is the responsibility of the finance committee, and, uh, that they provide to town meeting representatives. We have the notification of, of organizational town meeting. Notification of annual town meeting, and then seven days after you come back, is, sorry, then you also have a notice to appear. It's just due from town moderator to town officials and employees. So, anybody that, that is being asked to speak at town meeting has to, uh, provide, uh, has to be provided, um, seven days notice. For the charter, uh, organizational town meeting takes, takes place on the twenty-ninth of April, uh, and then our start of town meeting would be May third. That's what we have so far, uh, as, as the other, uh, boards, committees, and, uh, officers of the town provide, uh, provide with, with additional input on what should be added and what dates it's due. Uh, I'll be incorporating that, uh, but this is where we, uh, will be currently looking at. Do they have any questions?
That's great, Mr. KB, um, we'll just sprinkle in like thirty, uh, other hearings. That'll.
I know, I know. It's getting, it's getting pretty big, uh, this document, but, um, uh, my hope is that, that we can then provide this on, on perhaps our website, or wherever we need to, uh, provide it, so people know when, when things are happening and what's due where.
Mr. KB, what comments? Ms. Roberts?
Oh, yes, oh, good job, Steve, this is real, I mean, Mr. KB.
I know you got expressions.
Um, question, uh, in the section where it talks about the budget, uh, deadline, is that board of selectmen, um, town manager will provide board of selectmen, or select board, I'm sorry, or, um, madam chair will provide FinCom a balanced budget? So, should we look for the words "balanced budget" in the language? That's my only question.
Uh, it, well, in the statute, that, that, that word doesn't exist. Uh, that was, I couldn't find it anywhere in, in the statute.
Okay.
Uh, we can certainly make that.
Not in the rules, on the right side, because I can't see the narrative, so.
Yeah, no, it's not, um.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no mention of a balanced budget, just that a budget be, could be, uh, provided.
Oh, okay, so it's not in the statute, okay.
Boards in the past have provided unbalanced budgets to FinCom. I think that someone is driven by the, um, the unknowns at the time that the budget is due. So, you know, lack of knowledge about state aid and things like that, we don't have. The, uh, state budget isn't released until, the governor has released his budget till the third, I think, Monday of January, or whatever date that is, so. But I, I understand your point, that could be a, that could be more of a policy direction of this board in submitting our budget to FinCom, to ensure it's a balanced budget.
I think since I've been here, in my experience, that the board has, has submitted it as a balanced budget. It may not be in full agreement, let's say, with what the school department request was, then that becomes a FinCom decision, but I just, I know in my experience, since I've been here, I believe we've presented, um, three balanced budgets.
Mr. Krisky, I saw you raise your hand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to make a comment on, uh, statements made about boards, um, submitting unbalanced budgets. Uh, in past, they did, uh, there was a very contentious time, uh, when the board felt that they were working hard to get to their number, uh, only to be, uh, told to cut your number again. And, uh, the boards, uh, a couple of them that I sat on felt that it was better to just submit the unbalanced budget, let the finance committee do what they were going to do, and then go to town meeting to stand with our town manager in support of what we really needed. Uh, so, you know, when comments are made, I just, you know, I didn't want, you know, it to look like some boards just decided to shrug their responsibility and, and do an unfunded, unbalanced budget. But, uh, we've, we've gone past that point, but, uh, you know, just the historical know- knowledge is that's why it was done. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Is that Mr. Rowe?
Oh, Phil Rowe, town accountant.
I know. Thanks for joining.
Yeah, on the, um, submission to FinCom, I just want to let you know there was some discussion at the last meeting about extending the due date, uh, so that we would have the governor's, uh, local aid proposal. And that, uh, the sense was that the board rejected, the, the, rather the committee rejected that notion. They want it, they still want it by the third Tuesday in, in January regardless. So, that's it.
All right. Um, I think this is a good working document and I think it really, um, as you said, Mr. Kavy, you can get this on the website. This will help at least inform folks when things happen and how they happen. Um, and then we can build in all the other, all the other required meetings or, or scheduled meetings as, as they crop up.
I'm going to type, put this on my refrigerator at home. Normally I have it up in my office, but with COVID, I, you know, it's going to be in my fridge, so every time I open my refrigerator, I'm going to say, oh, no. I got this going on tonight. It's actually great. Thank, thank you. It's actually, it's a great document.
My hope is that, that, you know, at, at least including, including the variable dates, that, uh, uh, I can put a little more work into this, uh, to make it a little bit more dynamic, but, but I think that, uh, uh, my hope is that, that once we get this all more or less nailed down, that, uh, this, this can just be reused year over year, uh, and, and people will become much more accustomed to what, what their responsibilities are, what you expect of this process.
Right. All right. Um, any additional comments on the calendar? Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Kavy.
Of course, thank you.
Uh, we do have our blanket, uh, budget discussion, including directives, discussion of accounts, expenses, revenues, capital items and other budget items as they may arise, uh, sort of catchall. Does anybody have any comments or requests under this item? Dr. Grimm, I know you'd sent me some information if you. Um. Or we can hold off till the eighth, uh, it's up to you.
I, I just wanted to give the, the board a brief update. I, I didn't want to respond with this last week because I hadn't talked to the people involved, but it's been something that I've sort of been working on, uh, for a while and, and your directive sort of fell right into it on the H R end of things. You had all put as a goal for me to have all the job descriptions or as many as possible done, uh, by my next evaluation and really start to pull that whole H R component together. And part of the directive last week was to, to work on that or to find funding if I needed to, to do that. Um, but in the meantime, I, I am very, really very blessed to have people on a team who have several people have approached me and asked to become more involved. They want to grow in their roles, they want to learn, um, and it's not about money, they're not looking for stipends. This is, these are just people who want to take on more, busy people who actually want to take on more. Uh, and what I have created, because when we're talking about things like job descriptions and performance evaluation tools, these are not things that I necessarily need to hire a long-term, full-time person for. Um, it's things we could bring consultants in for, it's things we can do training on. But what we have created right now is a human resources task force of internal people. I have, and, and what's interesting is when you start talking to people and you find out what's in their background, where their education is, what's on their resumes, it's not always what they do for a living. Um, I don't have a public administration degree, um, but it's what I do for a living. But on the other hand, I have a communications background. So, this is what I'm finding with my staff when they come to me and say, I'd like to do some more, and I'm like, well, what are you going to do? So, what I have is a, a human resources task force team, um, it is comprised currently of uh, Trish Chopshier, uh, D, obviously led by Deanna, uh, with the assistance of Tracy. Uh, Susan Herman will sit on it, Matt Cauchon for sort of a, a younger perspective, since all of us come out of an H R of the same era. And we need someone who comes out of H R in a different era. And, uh, and we also have a representative from public safety, that person is in labor union, so until we get that fully cleared with the labor union as an additional duty, um, that's accepted by the union, I, I, I don't want to announce the name publicly on that, but I felt public safety should be in there. And this group is actually going to be charged with working within the town, talking to directors, figuring out what job descriptions should be within these jobs that already exist in their departments. This isn't about creating new job descriptions necessarily, but looking at what we already have, uh, and working on codifying those. I'll have to deal with Deanna on the labor end if there are labor implications to some of those job descriptions. They're also going to do a little bit of research on performance evaluation tools. People like Sue Herman have done a lot of this in their, in their background as auditors. Uh, Fred Bruton, he comes with an education background and is very interested in looking at training that we don't necessarily offer. Uh, we may, you know, we talked earlier about, you know, customer service. Let's say I have a division that has a customer service issue. What are we doing for training to work with those people? Uh, this is what this group wants to take on, and these are people who have actually approached me within, in the past with desires to take on these H R type of roles. These will not impact individuals per se. I mean, obviously if someone's in a job description, you know, we're going to want to know what they do. But this is really a great chance for us to get a handle on what's being done with every position in town. And so what I would like to do for at least this budget, so this budget year, money's tight anyway. What I would like to do is i- 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 incorporate the services of these people who have been willing to step forward in a task force environment. And that's what I want to do to, to basically produce for you. You would ask for job descriptions, but I'd really like to have a much greater H R package for you by come summer. Um, and it may take till December, depending on how far they get, because they're going to have a lot of work to do. It's going to be a, a big effort and it's in addition to their regular job duties. So, it's really the creation of an H R task force to assist me in broadening out the H R function. If during this process we find that we are going to need to hire for H R to develop that further, then that will become part of that. Uh, but I'm actually kind of excited about this and, and when I approach the, the people who've sort of sporadically and independently been saying, hey, I want to do a little bit more. And I can tell you on a personal level, um, that's a great feeling as a manager to actually have my staff coming to me and, um, asking to get more involved. And I love people who want to grow and learn more about everybody else's job as well as their own. It just makes for a much better team environment. So, I'm pretty excited about this. I wanted to share it with you last week when you were talking about the H R, but I actually hadn't reached out to the people yet and, and, and pulled it together, so I, I, I didn't think it was appropriate to start saying, hey, you know, I think Trish might want to do this, uh, and not have formalized it with, with the particular people involved. So, I'm pretty excited about it. I'm very hopeful that we will get some very concrete things for the board. I think one of the concerns when you gave that to me as an assignment was how do we quantify, I believe it's like William Roberts, you talked about how do we quantify if I meet certain goals? Um, this is one of those very concrete ways that we can quantify beyond just my goal, that I have an obligation to reach, also for the goal that, that we go to the town, which is why you have it set as a goal for me. Um, is that this, this will be very beneficial to the town. And I love having particularly evaluations, a- and again, performance evaluations for labor unions is a different story, those have to be bargained. But performance evaluations for my non-union, um, I think those types of things being developed internally will lead to it being far more received, far better received. Uh, this is their colleagues, their peers coming up with these ideas and these thoughts. Uh, I may bring in, I may use, uh, a little bit of money and bring in somebody to, to consult as a training day with them. We have people who do personnel training, so I might have that task force do a training day together, um, just to broaden their own knowledge. I, 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 look, I've got people who want to grow and gain knowledge, I'm all about that and, and, and they want to apply that to the town. So, I just wanted to brief you on that. Otherwise, the budget is coming together relatively nicely, as nicely as any budget can when you've just dropped your local receipt revenues to seventy-five percent. Um, and that's what you have to budget based on next year, uh, as opposed to the hundred twenty the year before. But, uh, it's, it's, it's coming together, um, I think, okay, and my departments were reasonable, we're cutting from there, obviously. There's no nice to haves in this year's budget. It, it's all must haves. So, I just wanted to give you an update on that.
Thank you, Dr. Grimm. Um, Mr. Oregan, I'm sorry, I may go up first.
I, I just want to thank you for the effort on the human resource management, uh, uh, side. My, my comments were, um, intended for the, for the broader issue. Uh, not, uh, a- a- and, and if I referred to performance evaluations and, uh, job descriptions, those were, th- tho- those were, um, discreet examples of where, uh, I, I think maybe as a starting point, we, we need to do better. But it, it's encouraging to me that you've got this, uh, if it is enthusiasm across various groups in town, uh, you know, of, of employees, because I do believe that tends to make things work better than, you know, some H R person sitting in an office who walks around with a clipboard checking off, uh, ac- accomplishments. Um, so, so thank you for putting that. It doesn't mean we may not need some staff support for the kind of H R management function. With this many employees and the diversity of what they do, um, you know, doing it on the fly, if you will, is, you know, is not necessarily bringing us value. And I, I do believe that, um, we need to look at whether or not it is truly cost-effective to not fund a position like that when you've got the, uh, potential turnover, uh, inefficient use of resources, uh, hu- human resources, uh, and, and other aspects that cost us, you know, but those are sort of unseen expenses. Sort of, to me, it's like, uh, the training cost for when we lose a police officer to another town. We don't see that, but if we leverage that across, uh, compensation, we might not have to spend it and it might be less. So, thank, thank you.
Yeah, I think, uh, Mr. Oregan, you, that's kind of what, what I was thinking when this was presented last week as a directive of, um, human resources, break it down into different buckets, you have, you know, collective bargaining and labor relations, benefits, hiring, uh, professional development or performance evaluations and reviews. The different buckets that H R covers and, uh, I think the goal is just to make sure that we're fully staffed and able to do all that without overtaxing the manager, you know? Because I know Dr. Grimm has taken on the breadth of, of all the la- all the labor relations aspects and things like that. Uh, but there is obviously sort of the internal labor relations and then hiring benefits. It's all, it's pretty, it's a pretty complex field, uh, that's evolved for, you know, the type of business we operate as a town. So, I think the goal is just to make sure that everything's, everything's covered and we have the staff support needed. So, uh, ultimately that's for you, Dr. Grimm, to make sure you have the staff support needed. That's, that's our thing.
And really the, the question, and it, it's a delicate one, of where the schools fall into this, because right now Deanna and Tracy do the, the payroll function, the H, the, uh, healthcare function for the schools. And I'd really like to see where there may be overlap, you know, and that's going to have to be an open, frank discussion with Dr. Marcus. Um, I, I would rather take on maybe one of their staff and have, and broaden out what they do to assist us if there's a possibility of working with that type of mutual, um, relationship. But that's a big step and right now I, I want to get a handle as I can on, on what I need, think we need to first, which is the job description question, because I can't properly discipline in many cases if I need to discipline, and I can't evaluate until I have a formal document of what someone's supposed to be doing. Um, and, and, you know, as Deanna's pointed out, we have some, we have others, we don't have some at all. We have some that are forty years old, we have some that got pulled from a state website, never modified. Um, and that's why I look at, at this point, um, putting together this group now to start the process and really then, I, then next step may be for them to look collectively at a group is where they think we need to grow in H R. I really kind of want this to be like a brain trust, um, that takes us to the next step and advises me based on what they're learning, talking to directors and, and, and working with performance evaluations and some trainings, to see where they think we are, where we have our best strengths and where we need to, to, to beef it up a little bit. And then at that point, we could look to hire and see if we wanted to, to broaden out our H R function, have an H R, uh, like an executive director of H R umbrella, which is the other thing eventually, like we have Janice in, in the human services end, we have Mark Tuesday on the developmental services end. We may need an H R bucket, if you will, an H R umbrella, I should say. So, but I want this group to start really getting their hands dirty with this and, um, taking a hard look. It'll ta- it'll also look at advertising, recruiting, eventually, that's, that's another big portion of H R that's, that's huge. And, and we need to broaden on that, so that'll be another component that they'll be looking at. Get the start.
Ms. Roberts?
Oh, I was just going to follow up on what town manager was just indicating. It's, it's a breath of fresh air to hear about all of the creativity and the excitement surrounding the area of H R. And also the second point that you made about consolidating, uh, our research, res- uh, sources, like talking with the school to see if there is a resource that way. And these times that is exactly what we were talking about at our last meeting. But as you go through your, uh, development phase of this task force, uh, I would like for you to consider, how do you handle, it's more of a H R management function, um, where staff want to talk with on a discreet level with, about a, about an issue where they don't feel comfortable coming to you. So, if you could build that into your, um, your process as well, how do you address that? That would be perfect. Thank you so much.
And, and currently, right now, we're very open that they are to go to Deanna if they have a concern that they are not comfortable bringing to me. But again, Deanna has a lot on her plate, um, she does huge work. And is there a group, can we have some type, you know, our police department, for example, uh, has an employee group, like a, 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 that, uh, you could go talk to a group of fire department. Many towns have these debrief groups for police and fire who might have a tough situation. Do we eventually look at having a peer team, a peer review team, for example, for employees who are facing personal issues and don't want to discuss them with me? Um, those are, those are all the types of things that I think this is just a baby step for this group, uh, to start, but it was a priority to get the job descriptions first, I think, that, you know, until we know what we're supposed to be doing. Uh, it's kind of pointless. So, I think, uh, but I, a- again, I am open to this group, and this is a really creative group of people, um, and, and what they come up with, I, I'm not, I'm not sticking my hands in this until they report it back to me. I want them, this is going to be like ground up.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Oregan, did you raise your hand again, or is that a?
No, I didn't. Um, that might be a hangover hand. I will lower it.
Other members of the board?
Play my mouse and get a hand up sometimes.
Do other members of the board have comments on this? Uh, the only thing I wanted to mention, um, under the budget item, um, I've heard some towns are considering waiving, uh, license renewal fees. And I was curious what the impact would be on our budget, if we were to consider some kind of waiver or, uh, establishing thresholds for waivers for, you know, small businesses or things like that.
Phil, we have a, a fees line item. Right now, it's, it's kind of, there are a lot of things sort of co- uh, combined into that. So, I think, Bill, we could weed that out, figure out what's your, what's your fees and what's your, you know, fees for like permits, for example, which we don't want to waive. That's, we want to encourage the development and we have people paying for that. Um, but as far as business licensing, there's, there's a lot of towns talk about liquor license. Um, the town managers group, I belong to, just had a long discussion about what they're doing with liquor licenses, prorating or, you know, giving a couple of months off during shutdowns, but, you know, wha- whatever it might be. So, I think, Bill, maybe our next meeting, I think Bill's on there still, we can, we can try to pull out for you exactly what it is we bring in on those licensing fees. And, and then the board can decide if, if it's something feasible. Uh, it may be doable, we can offset that somewhere else, particularly depending on how the next few days of budgets fall into line for us on what we're trimming in the departments and what we can manage to afford.
Yeah, and Dr. Grimm, if you have other, uh, towns' examples of what they're. Uh, that'd be great to, to hear.
I'll get, I'll get some more information for you all.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything under, uh, budget discussion for directives?
So.
Yes, Ms. Roberts?
Yeah, uh, Madam Chair, for our discussion about the, the revenue split, the, will that, uh, be held during our revenue conversation? And other, uh, shared services, will that be covered during, uh, another session of the budget? And other, uh, shared services, would that be covered during, uh, another session of the budget? Not tonight?
I, I think once we have some numbers in front of us, it'll help us. Um, but I do want to kind of address that, though. I think in the, you know, in the past, there was kind of a divisive use of language by saying the split, you know, sixty-forty split or sixty-five, thirty-five split, and referencing the two budgets as split budgets. I think we should go in with a different approach this year and understand that we have a town budget, and one of the departments in that town is the school. So, um, I know we kind of break it down, of, like, kind of realize it in our heads using percentages or amounts and things like that. Uh, but, you know, I, I just want to make sure that we're not using, um, kind of language in that regard. You know, and we recognize that it's, it's just, it is another department in the town. Um, when we get into the discussion about revenues, we can look at, obviously, where the funding is going, if historically where it's gone, and then also, uh, as you mentioned, Ms. Roberts, you want to look at some of those, uh, joint expenses beyond the joint accounts. Um, it's, you know, again, we'd have to obviously loop in the superintendent and determine, you know, and have that discussion with them, um, if, if we decide to go that route. So, I think that's the intention of also having a sit-down meeting, and I wish we could do more of a, a real roundtable. We'll have to do virtual roundtable and get it out there, so.
Chair, Chairman Howe, if just, so Ms. Roberts is aware, I have asked Ms. Herman to start gathering some of that information. Um, she's got a, a very broad umbrella. She sees school accounts all the time as well as, as municipal accounts when she's working through the municipal systems, and she's working with the directors to determine exactly what it is that as a town we do, as we should for the schools, um, but just to get a better sense of that. And again, I think what we're looking at with my perspective is to also look at whether it may be overlap.
Mr. Oregan?
Two things. One, um, I think we should have a, a fine jar for anyone who uses the word "split." Like, you have to put a dollar, and I'm sure we will be able to balance the budget, uh, and everybody have an increase if we start that, uh, so the problems will go away. On a serious note, I think one thing that would, uh, be helpful, um, e- every year I learn of a new area in town government finance where, um, I use the snow account because that's the most obvious, it's possible to deficit spend. Um, so, uh, I think in this year of, um, not enough money, to the extent we're able to identify areas of expenditure where that kind of opportunity, amortizing, expend, you know, I, I, I don't pretend to be a municipal finance expert, but we have some. So, areas where we may, uh, historically, um, spend or incur the entire cost. Um, it'd be nice to know how we can extend that payment out as an accounting matter to make our, to make the, uh, ends of the rope meet. And also, even though we can't borrow for operating expense, um, you know, we have interest rates that are gonna continue to be at low levels. I don't want to borrow, uh, but I also don't want to lay off personnel. And so, um, the schools need teachers, the, um, and all kinds of support. Uh, po- uh, police and fire are mo- more critical, public health more critical. We could go down all of the things. We are not offering municipal services that are a luxury in this town. Uh, senior outreach, uh, in this day and age of COVID, we can't do enough of it, and some of those social services tend to get cut first. So, to the extent we're able to find ways and resources, you know, to amortize expenses, uh, that might qualify for some, some kind of borrowing, um, at least to have those as options, even if we decide not to take them. Thank you.
Ms. Roberts?
I have to do a little pushback on Mr. Oregan, and that is, we cannot eliminate split from our vocabulary.
A dollar, a dollar.
Okay, because we just talked about, uh, a tax split between, um, residential and commercial with, at the Board of Assessors' hearing, so, but I can understand what you're saying.
In context, it would have to do with the school and municipal departments. That's when the fine jar gets used.
Okay, that's our question we can deal with. Thank you.
I can tell you, depending on how far back my back gets pushed against a wall, I might need a raise to fund what I'm gonna end up doing with that jar. Now, if everybody plays nice in the sandbox, I'll be fine, but I may be coming to you for a raise.
But I, I, I agree, it should be a pro- program-based approach, and the hard part, which will be painful, uh, will be figuring out how to fund where everything is a priority that we've got left to figure out, and it's not gonna be easy.
Uh, as I said, I am not as horrified as I thought I might be going into this. My, my directors, I mean, we had a big gap when we first came in. It was, you know, the typical million and change or two million or whatever it is. Um, and then once we cut through the, yeah, I'd really like to haves, um, which, and, and again, I have to say, my, my directors really did follow the directive of, please, this is a COVID year, only ask for what you truly believe. Um, and our large municipal contracts are now not at two-point-five. So, that's been a big help the past two years, that we're no longer with an automatic two-point-five for the vast majority of our employees. We're at one-point-fives and one-point-seven-fives pretty much for next year on the big groups. So, that's pretty helpful as well in helping us hold us together. So, um, you know, I, 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 again, I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic, but we're, we're gonna be, we're gonna be okay. It's not gonna be great, but we're gonna be okay. And, and during COVID, as much as I hate okay, that's like saying, yeah, I gotta see, so I passed, and I'm happy. Um, but in this year, sometimes I, you have to set the bar where it's an appropriate bar that you can reach. And, um, if I, if we can still do this without, you know, we may not be able to reduce those structural deficits we worked so hard for a couple of years to do, but if we can do this without adding to that deficit, I, 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 I can't, I can't put in structural deficits to try to hold us, because we'll, we'll pay the price down the road. Uh, but if we could do this and just at least maintain, even if I can't narrow those gaps this year, uh, I, I'll be happy with that, and, and I hate saying that, but I'd be unrealistic if I said anything else to you at this point.
So, what direction are we gonna take with the debt service percentage? It's known as four percent of the operating budget. Uh, but last year, fiscal year, it was a little bit lower, so any, any direction on that, I guess, from this board to, to you?
Well, so we, so where, I'll tell you, where we ended our budget meeting the other day was when Bill curled up and said, oh, we're on debt service. I said, okay, we just got through the operating ones, let's look at debt service next week. So, that, like, give me a week to answer that for you, if you don't mind. Um, but I, I have to tell you, the, the, looking at what we're looking at with the sewer, that grant money that came in, for example, uh, that's huge, and within thirty to sixty days, we should have an answer on that federal grant. If we were to get that federal grant, plus there's a, a planning grant of like two-hundred-and-fifty thousand that, uh, is a housing-related grant that John Charbonneau has applied for, we almost, we may be in a position to be pretty close to funding the whole sewer project. Now, not that that's gonna say we don't still need to pay our debt service at, you know, three-point-eight or four percent, but in, in keeping in mind that we're not getting deeper in a hole here, that's, that, that's a really good feeling, too.
And our capital request will help dictate some of that as well.
Absolutely, which will be slim this year.
Right.
All right, we're approaching the witching hour here, so unless there's any final thoughts on this item, uh, we did our to make it through our consent agenda. Um, sorry, Bob, you missed that. We have three executive session items. Um, item A is to consider the purchase exchange, lead to valuable real property pursuant to general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A six, for fifteen, fifteen West Street. Item B is to discuss strategy with respect to litigation pursuant to general law. Section thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A three, um, Stanford Lucian, Calixty versus Neil David, et al., federal docket number one-seventeen CV one-one-three-one-two dash NNG. And item C is to approve executive session minutes of November tenth, twenty-twenty. I think of finding that it's against the board's litigating and negotiating position to discuss these matters in open session, and therefore it could be discussed in executive session. Motion to enter into the executive session for the reasons stated.
So made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. On the motion, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. Caden?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, we will adjourn from the executive session. We'll now return to open session. Our next meeting is a week from today, which is December first. Um, thank you everyone for attending tonight, and have a happy and safe and healthy Thanksgiving. Bye.